You'll join us later.
All right, today is Wednesday, May 3rd, and we are starting with a workshop this morning on the, or this afternoon, sorry, it's been a long day. On the FY 2022 audit and update on the school budget, so.
Yes, this evening, we have with us. Markham is a new auditor for the first of like five years. So this year was interesting. I should preface all of this by saying that the town suffered some challenges just from a transition step down here. The finance office almost had a hundred percent turnover. Of finance, so we published that transition first of the year and Norman and staff went.
Went about the business of getting the audit right away. And thankfully, James and his staff were able to accommodate as well. The other thing we ran into is of course, Markham has a lot of private clients and our timeline being delayed pushed into some of their other workload, so. We apologize for the delay. And at this point, we certainly expect to be back on regular schedule, improved schedule next year, and Norm can perhaps speak to that later on. So without further ado, this is your meeting to meet with your independent auditor. So I think James has a presentation you'd like to share.
We did put together a brief presentation, maybe 20 slides. Next one. Again, we, you know, happy to be here. Thanks for inviting us to present our results at this point of the audit process. And we were engaged back last summer. We began some of our planning process, did some of our walkthroughs, some of our permanent file stuff. And then, like we've mentioned, turnover in the office, and then it certainly turned the clock, calendar over to 23. When Norm came on board, we, you know, connected early in the year and. As I mentioned, our, our workload switches in January, February, March, right through with commercial clients and so we were able to. You know, bridge some gaps, get, get some staffing in place, and at this point, we're anticipating issuance of the final report, hopefully within the next 10 days. We're in the final review and drafting stage. We've been working with Norman and the finance team. As well as the school's finance team on finalizing numbers and drafting, but some of those were shared in the packet tonight, I know. We're also beginning this, the planning for the uniform guidance, the federal audit compliance testing, those programs in the process of being determined right now, which programs will be tested. And the anticipation time is to get that report out by the end of the month. Our team is already planning. For next year's audit, starting next month, so we'll continue to torture the finance staff from bringing up one heading right into the next, so. As we go through the slides, feel free to ask questions at any time. I did thought we would start off with just a little bit of background, right now, the, what we're really going to be discussing tonight are the fund financial statements. Essentially, you know, the town's funds are kind of glorified checkbooks. They're reported on the modified accrual basis of accounting. Where revenues are recognized when they're available and measurable, so whatever is billed during the year for taxes and collected within 60 days is counted revenue for this fiscal year. And expenditures are recognized generally when fund liabilities are incurred, when something is purchased, when services are provided by employees. Those get recognized within the funds, and certainly the, the town's general fund or its major fund, and that's made up of a conglomeration, the two, two big components of that, the town's general fund as well as the school's unrestricted fund. And my button is going to jump. Within the fund financial statements, the, the measurement focus there is really very short term. It looks at cash or things that can be converted to cash, or you can use cash in the short. That measurement focus has been retained by the standards, pretty much because it's important because that's how everyone budgets. You know, taxes come in in one year and the theory is those are going to pay expenditures that are incurred within that period. We've kind of got interperiod equity, people are paying for services as they're rented and that current financial resources focus, you know, accomplishes that measurement. There are no reporting of any long-term capital assets, fixed assets are treated as expense in the fund statements, nor are there any long-term obligations, bonds payable, they're only reported in the government-wide statements. Which came about a little over 20 years ago. Everybody thought at that point it'll take some years before they become important. Frankly, none of our clients really do much analysis on the, on the government-wide statements. Those are on a full accrual basis, as if you were a public company. But everybody still drives to the budget, the tax rate, the services being provided in that current period. There are a few exceptions on that, not, not recording liabilities. Certainly, there were a couple here will go over, if there were, if there were claims and judgments, you know, thankfully, the town does not have any judgments or claims pending. Those would only be recognized within those fund statements when payments were due. Again, debt service is only recognized as liabilities for those payments become due. Post-employment obligations for pension and post-employment benefits, those are only reported within the fund statements for payments that are due within that period. And the last exception I want to talk about was just compensated absences for vested, you know, vacations if paid time off. That liability should only be reported in the funds. Or pending payouts to separate employees for their vested time. During our audit process, you know, part of our role is to certainly examine and audit the accuracy of the numbers that the finance departments present in the financial statements. But also evaluate whether those numbers are in accordance with the accounting standards. What we observed in this go around in our initial audit, we probably tortured them more in the initial time than, but we'll, we'll pick different areas to torture next time. But we did raise some questions on the level of compensated absences that were being accrued within the general fund and to a lesser extent within the school's unrestricted fund. What we determined was that there was a significant amount of long-term liability that was already reported in the government-wide statements, it was also accrued as a liability within the general fund. Compounding that, there was also a designation within the general fund to earmark some of the general fund's fund balance for those liabilities that are already reported. The result of this, and then again, discussion with management on the potential treatment, management agreed to record a prior period adjustment, the total amount was a million, one fifty-nine. For over accrued compensated absences had been carried in the prior financial statements. So that was initially a $1.1 million increase in fund balance to restate those opening numbers to what they should have been under generally accepted accounting principles, so. An immediate boost in fund balance from that. From, from the application of that, certainly there are certain amounts of, you know, compensated absences are included within the funds, but again, they meet the definition of vested employees to be paid out shortly thereafter after the end of the year. So reflecting that adjustment, there were no other significant adjustments that we proposed from our audit procedures. For the year ended June of 22, and again, the, the general fund is made up of two big components, the town's general fund, which we'll speak about first. From operations, total fund balance increased by a million, three sixty-eight. Which brings the unassigned fund balance up to just under $10 million, nine million, nine thirty-one. That number represents a little over 10%, 10.04% of the general fund's prior year budget expenditures. And we know from reading policy and then speaking with management, that's right at the, the 10% policy that the town is set for the unassigned fund balance. When we look at that from a, from a health perspective, you know, typically one month's worth of unassigned fund balances about eight and a half percent factor. Two months would bring you to seventeen. A lot of our communities that we deal with are looking to bring it in that range within eight and 15% ourselves. We do understand the rating agencies look at that unassigned as a part of their metric that they use for bond rating. But certainly, the town is within a healthy range of that unassigned fund balance within the general. If we look at the school's general fund for the year, their fund balance component increased by just over $463,000. As the school is, is much more of a special revenue fund, a designated activity within the, within the overall general fund, it does not maintain any unassigned fund balance. The schools, the fund balance attributable to the school is on a hundred percent earmarked for educational purposes, either through assignments or commitments of fund balance. It's dedicated to the educational programs that the school runs. So the, the, the school's in impact has, and with school has no impact on the town general funds, unassigned fund balance for the year, their results stay carved out in, in those other two categories. We did put a little bit of a chart together that, that shows the, the governmental funds. Again, there are two that are reported as major within the economic standards, the general fund, which again is made up of a couple, and the Parkway Assessment Fund. The other column is a conglomeration of all the other small funds that don't meet that definition from a financial reporting perspective. So we're looking at the general fund, at the bottom line, that chart, the change from the previous year of two million, nine ninety-one, again, a piece of that is the prior period adjustment of, you know, one million, one fifty-nine. From current year operations, there was an increase of a million, eight thirty-two. Again, the, the sum of those two figures we just spoke of being a million, three sixty-eight from the town and four hundred and sixty-three thousand from the school. The other fund, the conglomeration of all the funds had an increase, and the Parkway Assessment Fund had a decrease of just about $190,000 for the year. We did put together a little bit of a chart, I think this, you know, shows in a little bit easier fashion of what the, the components of the fund balance had been and what the trend is over the, the last year, certainly. The increase this year in the blue attributable to both of those things we speak, spoke of, the, the prior period adjustment, that 21 column is not reflective of that. As well as the current year increase from, from current operations. Again, within the, the, within the town's policy and certainly. A relatively healthy benchmark, if we look at all of our clients in the government sector, I think a lot would be envious to have a 10% unassigned fund balance. On the next slide, we do have a little bit of a recap of revenues and expenditures for the year, what will be shown in the fund statements, the property taxes with the general fund came in at just under seventy-nine million dollars. We looked historically, the town's collection percentage has always been strong, this year was just under a hundred percent of taxes billed were collected. And another factor that the rating agencies lose when, use when they look at the health of the community. The overall change in unassigned fund balance for the year was just under $2.5 million. If we look at a couple of the components of that. Certainly, the million, three sixty-eight that was generated by the town portion of the general fund was part of that increase. The other part of the increase is really changes in the reserves and designations, certainly there was a bit of a relieving of the designation for compensated absences. Based on the prior period adjustment, that amount came down, there were some other uses of assigned and committed fund balance for encumbrances and re-appropriated balances. Again, we've audited the figures on the flow of numbers through the equity section and are comfortable in, in the presentation of where the unassigned fund balance is presented today. If we look at the next slide, when we look at results of operation, we look at some comparisons to budget. Total revenues came in above budget by just under $250,000. Property taxes, again, the assumption for, for collector percentage was right on, taxes came in within 151,000 of what was budgeted. When you look at almost a seventy-eight, seventy-nine million dollar assessment with being within 150,000 of what was anticipated is, you can't get much closer. Permits and licenses came in a bit above what was anticipated, consistent with our other clients, you know, recording fees, real estate transfers. With the positive mortgage rates of the past, you know, refinancing that were happening, most of our communities had similar, similar experiences in, in recording fees and the like. Into government, the revenue was just about what was anticipated. Couple of items were below budget, but again, not by significant amounts, investment income. No, no one was able to hit rates that we were seeing today on investments as far as CDs and stuff like that. And then just other revenue was below by a small amount, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the year. Certainly, none of these, when, when we inquired and audited what the variance was, were, none of the responses were unanticipated and we were satisfied that. The accounting has been correct. When we look on the expenditure side, expenditures did come in significantly below appropriated amounts. Again, we're seeing this across the board in our governmental practice. I think some of the impacts of the pandemic are still continuing. Governments are largely personnel, organizations, salaries make up a significant amount of the expenditures. Again, we did receive explanations on open positions and breakage during the year, which contributed to savings and personnel costs. The three largest, you know, areas under budget, education, public safety and public work, you can see the numbers on the slides. There were other smaller and, you know, functional. Variance isn't the budget, but certainly the explanations were that, you know, we, the one-time items are isolated changes in operating plans. Certainly brought those home. Go through the last couple of slides, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to tackle those. As far as pension plans, again, the, the liability for those plans are only recorded in the government-wide financial statements, it's much more of a disclosure item in the financials. The town's net pension liability. This year decreased, it's just over $113,000, previous year is about six and a half million, I believe. Significant impact on that was positive investment returns that happened during that. Twenty-one year. We expect that to turn around as investments. Last year, though, have not been. As strong. The town is consistently funded its annual contributions at or above the required contribution rates each year. So largely, the liabilities that are out there are really not in control of the town, you're making your payments as, as scheduled. And certainly, the, the investment results and changes and assumptions is the largest driver. Yeah. The other post-employment benefit liability that's comparable to the previous year that will be reported at just over 10 million, two. The obligation is satisfied, again, as a pay-as-you-go basis, as those benefits are paid for. With this liability, it's much more an estimate based on the actuarial assumptions that go into the computation. Certainly, the largest of that being the assumption on long-term healthcare cost trend rates. Most of the actuaries we work with are using the best, the best out there that everyone agrees with, but certainly no one's really gone back and had a study long after the fact to see. Where those numbers really come out at. Again, there's no, there's no coupon or no, you know, annual payment to be made on these, it's really just as the benefits are paid each year. The actuaries do their magic to compute the, the overall liability and change in that life. At the end of the audit, when we do issue the financial statements, we will issue a communication to those charged with governance. That will recap what our responsibilities were under the audit, how we conducted our audit in accordance with the standards, using statistical tests and sampling, we didn't examine every transaction. We'll also comment on if there were any disagreements with management, which there have been none. If there were any instances where management was seeking other opinions from outside firms, we've had no event, no, none of those. No difficulties in dealing with management, there were no significant audit adjustments other than the prior period adjustments, which we proposed and which was accepted by management. And at this point, there are nothing that we have determined to be a material weakness. From day-to-day recording, day-to-day internal controls, control over expenditures, budgets, recording of revenues, reconciling accounts. So that, at this point, we're going to be no findings of that nature, certainly if there are any findings from the uniform guidance, federal compliance audit, those will also be reported in accordance with that engagement.
And your anticipated audit opinion?
The anticipated audit opinion will be a clean opinion, statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We do anticipate working with management on finalizing the report in the format of an annual comprehensive financial report that will be submitted to the GFOA for consideration in this certificate of achievement program again. That certificate's been awarded to the town for multiple years now, they have granted extensions based on the pandemic on submitting these. But again, we're anticipating that in the next, hopefully, next 10 days, that will be submitted off and running. We'll get good news on that front as well. If there are questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer.
Any questions from councilors or the school board? Council Hamel?
Yeah, thanks. I want to thank you for, you know, jumping in and pulling this, you know, together in such a short timeframe, I know that you started under, you know, under the gun here and were able to pull it together and pleased to hear that the news is favorable. We really didn't know, and I know, we spoke about this briefly, and there's no point going over, you know, over the past, but looking forward, what, what are your expectations in terms of your, you know, your own timing to begin preparing for next year? And, you know, what are you estimating that would be the delivery date for, you know, FY? Twenty-three's audit?
Sure. Our planning process, our manager on the job is, yes, get staff scheduled in June to begin our preliminary work. When we, when we, some of the audit work we were doing in February and March, we're actually auditing two years because we're in the current year, so some of our procedures have already been begun. We'll, we'll discuss with management, our, from that, we would probably give management July and August to close the books, perform their reconciliations, get ready for the audit. And I would anticipate mid-September, if everything is ready, we'd be back out and certainly issuing. Before December 31st, I'd like to say beginning of December, but.
Great. That, that is really good news. We've been looking forward to trying to do that for some time, so the fact that you can rebound from, you know, this year and just really get going is great. I have to confess that when I'm dealing with budgets, I'm not the most savvy numbers guy, but I, when I'm doing this, I, I, if, I feel like I'm driving down the road and someone, at night, and it's dark, and someone turns my headlights off. That's how I feel when I'm doing the budget, and what happens generally is we're, we get to a certain point and then something happens, like the school has an update, you know, and lately, the news has been great, so I think hallelujah, but. It might not always be great, so, you know, what? What can you tell me in the council about, about trying to lower our blood pressure on this? Are you, is there any advice, or is this always going to be a bad carnival ride?
It's probably a bad carnival ride, actually, but a lot of our communities, we do a lot of work in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Hampshire now, we just got brought a firm in in New Hampshire. One of the ways we get a lot of audit comfort is looking at what is being circulated to the council and those charged with governance during the year. So we'll pick some of the, you know, some of the interim closes, what the budget variances might be, compare them to the end of the year. Again, just to see from a continuity perspective, how accurate are those interim closings, how accurate are those numbers? Certainly, they're never always accurate, because as you mentioned, there is something that jumps out of the wood in front of the car and. You know. But we've had, you know, communities down our way, the past couple of years have been fortunate with, you know, savings on snow removal and, you know, the pandemic has certainly changed the nature of spending. But from a part, most of the governments are spending less than they had pre-pandemic. And taxes have not gone down, so there, there's some cushion built in there to a certain extent. You know, a lot of the training that we're doing now, we're starting to gear up for looking at what communities have in process for. When the federal coronavirus relief and ARPA funds start to dry up, how do those changes get introduced back into the budget? So there aren't, you know, we don't get to a fiscal cliff and we've been relying on these, and we have to go get alternate sources of revenue. It's, it's, so it's, it's looking at those processes and those controls over the interim reporting that, that gives us either more risk of what the numbers at the end of the year might be, or when we see that cadence in stride. Certainly looking for those in governance to be questioning items in the budget and getting your explanations and your questions answered. So that those items, you know, don't result in end of the year traffic jams or car crashes type of stuff.
One final question, I, I noticed in some of the materials we had seen before we got your PowerPoint presentation, you know, the first thirty, it kind of picked up on page thirty-three or something, so. Normally, I'm guessing that would be the management analysis, the management letter, is that, can you speak to that? I mean, I've looked at other towns' examples of management letters. And what I'm personally hopeful for, and I, I think I share this with other members of the finance committee and also the council, you know, we're really committed to try to get a better handle on our, on our. Fiscal picture and, and the line of sight to that, not only for us as a body, but also for the community. Can you give us an idea of what, you know? What that might look like and, you know, what we might expect from that, and would it include things like making recommendations on financial controls and, and process? You know, Norman's hit the ground running as well here, and we're in a rebuilding boat, but will you have some insight for us on those areas of opportunity and risk?
Yes, certainly, within the, the annual comprehensive financial report, the community benefits from, from two documents in there that aren't just charts and tables of numbers that I'm comfortable with, it's actually spoken in English. The letter of transmittal, which is from management, which talks about accomplishments during the year. Plans that are on the docket, economic development, it may talk a little bit about, you know, capital planning, and also within that, the management's discussion and analysis, is again, a narrative. That explains, you know, beyond what I've just done in the PowerPoint deck at a very high level, it'll go much deeper into what some of those variances are, the explanation for those changes. How those changes may impact the budgets that are being prepared now, maybe the budget's going to be prepared next year. There is really where the, the long-term perspective, you know, a three or five-year plan can be built off of those documents. So that people in, in governance have a much longer outlook than just what we're going to collect in taxes issue, what we're going to spend. Certainly, our management letter comments are driven largely by, you know, findings during the audit. This one has been largely uneventful, we do have, you know, some observations perhaps on. Making a lot lately on risk assessments internally, documenting of policies and procedures and controls and picking a risk, a risk assessment process, or maybe some of those transaction cycles are a deep dive are taken into those. In light of the pandemic that's happened the past three years, no one anticipated anything like that. Should some of those, you know, more emergency-type situations be entertained at least, contingency plans, certainly, we spent. Significant amount of time with your IT department, looking at IT controls, access to applications, how the, the IT system is backed up, data recovery. How enhancements of the systems are planned, sandboxed and tested before being introduced to a live system. We went over the procedures for granting access to applications to, to personnel, also when there's turnover, the timely turnoff of access to applications. Nowadays, with remote access to everything and people working from anywhere, there's a whole new set of controls need to be put in place to protect the. Valuable information that the town maintains. So we look at those areas. Happy to say that we have a lot of comments for a lot of community in those areas, not here, those are very well buttoned up, very well controlled, designed and, and applied in, in practice. But no doubt, there will be, you know, some management comments, some food for thought. Those types of issues, which, you know, we'll, we'll discuss with management. A lot of times, we'll ask management if they'd like to put a response to those in, so that that's communicated right within that same document. Be happy to come back and, and meet with the town and school department on any of those, if there are questions. And certainly, as we get into planning for the next engagement, I think this past year, we did send out a questionnaire, we do appreciate the couple of responses that we got back, people's concerns about. The finances and the controls, if there are things like that that are noted this year, again, we, we try to build those into the process, so when we come to the end of the audit, we can actually report back what the results were. And, and helps that dialogue between what you expect and what we actually bring to the table and deliver at the end.
Great. Thanks very much.
Just a final response, I, I think staff bears a, a, a lot of responsibility throughout the year in terms of providing that line of sight, and clearly, last year, we, we fell off that. Norman and I have committed to some new software that's going to help us provide some, some clarity and better reporting and improve that line of sight. So we've got a commitment to do that through the finance committee and then do it on a quarterly basis through the, through the full council.
And just to add on to that. Your packet, obviously, was a partial, what will flesh that out to a full act for will be footnote disclosures that support. The, the numbers in the full accrual financial statements. There will also be a section in the back, a statistical section, that will have tables with trends that are, are ten-year. Tables, so readers will be able to look at select financial data over the past 10 years and see trends that are happening. Within the town, so all of that will be in the, in the final product that their opinion covers.
Thanks.
Any other questions, John, Council Fuji?
Yeah, great presentation, nice work, I look forward to seeing the final product as well. So you obviously do a lot of these, I, I'm queuing in on, it looks like we authorized about four million more in spending in 2022 than was needed. And I'm trying to put that into context, so you've seen that with other communities, is it as much an effect of the pandemic and other funding sources coming into play, or?
Especially, especially in the personnel area, we've seen that consistently over the past few years with the pandemic. It's, my, my wife's a teacher, we do a lot of school departments, you know, remote learning, the amount of staffing that was covered by. S R grants and grant funding that lessen the draw on the general funds. Just the inability, when there is an open position to fill that position, some, you know, we're seeing, it's not uncommon for six, nine months to go by before a position does get filled. Certainly, that appropriated, assuming that we're going to be filled the entire year. Really not unexpected across our client base.
Have you seen anything, have you seen the trend start to pivot? Do you have any, are all of your year ends, June 30th, or do you have some that you're working on for?
Some in Florida, the September 30th, but they're in the same boat.
Okay, you're saying the same things.
And it hasn't turned yet, I, I think what it. And it hasn't turned yet. I I think what it has turned, there's more demand for employees now. You just can't find them. Uh, we have that in our own firm. It's uh. It's tough.
Um, the other question that I had was when you. How deeply do you look at how we categorize the different categories of fund balance for, you know, what's placed into committed versus assigned or unassigned or restricted?
Uh, we take a substantive approach to that. Certainly, management gives us a listing of of that and we will trace that to either minutes or resolutions, or we'll discuss. How that. Commitment or assignment came into play.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Any questions from the board? No?
That's great.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to thank, you know, management and. Governance for inviting us here, um. The cooperation that we've had um, in the last month and month and a half or two months on pulling this all together, everybody. Working as a team, it's been uh, it's been good to see. Enjoyed it. He he probably hasn't yet.
It sounds like you guys are getting ready to kick off the next, the next one anyways.
Yeah.
Joy will continue.
We'll keep right in the fire.
He's going to give me a month off to do. Do the issue.
All right, so now I think we're switching gears to the school budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on. Thank you.
You know, Kate was going to be delayed slightly. Perhaps Jeff or Diane can start. Uh, there is a a slide deck that I think will guide the conversation.
So there's not um. A whole lot of new information uh, to share. So a lot of the, in terms of our priorities and our needs for for next year, um. So, but I did, uh, Kate and I put together. A few slides just to. Uh, share obviously with uh, the council and the board, just kind of where we are currently there. There was, there has been um, some additional changes in terms of. Um, things that came in a little under budget and and things that um. Subsidy changes, additional subsidy changes since uh, we presented at the at the public presentation. At the end of March. So, but just to just to review our top priorities, K through twelve. Uh, again, and these are, these are our must haves, uh, and it is very much. Has been a needs-based uh, budget process as it's been. Kind of year in and year out in recent years, um, investments for compliance mandates and safety responding to current student needs. That allow us to develop uh, programming for incoming students. As uh, the enrollment study presentation, um. Kind of underscored the the dip enrollment enrollment that almost all communities experienced during COVID, uh, quickly uh, bounced back. And uh, we're in a growing community. Increasing access and inclusion efforts to address changing demographics and reducing learning gaps with specialized instruction. We've also had. Uh, learners that are designated as ELL uh, jump up. By about thirty to thirty-five percent just in this past year. So we've had a huge. Um, percent increase, at least for Scarborough, uh, and and handling families and kids who are coming in, um. Uh, with a very, very limited um, language skills in English. Uh, addressing increasing literacy support and responding to student data with added general education and special uh, services instruction. So we touched on this. Um, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our assessment data internally. Has led us to really, when we look at the the pandemic years and coming out of it. Um, we focus individualized support and um, early literacy and literacy instruction is is. And so we've been focusing a lot on that and into the budget year. Targeted developmentally appropriate social emotional learning curricula for grades K through eight. Um, which is benefiting both staff and students and PD. Um, and then again, this collaboration with town leadership and the board. Uh, and town council to meet facilities needs through our K to eight strategic projects. So those uh, key priorities for. You know, the development of the fifth year twenty-four uh, budget have not changed and and remain where we are. I did want to just share some of the um. Am I changing that? He's watching me. This is good. So. This is one of Kate's favorite slides because we do go line by line to try and find the savings and where we can reduce from one year to the next. Um, and so this is just a reminder of that, there, you know, not everything goes up in every section every year, although it certainly feels that way. Um, so this identifies some of the uh, reductions for personnel turnover. Contracted transportation, online and internet services, electricity and and heating oil due to some favorable contract pricing. Uh, and then projected unemployment costs going down slightly. Next slide. Again, uh, these are, these are. Uh, positions that we're adding. That are necessary to maintain. To maintain our 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 appropriate class size and levels. Maintain, again, as was mentioned as part of the audit, um. The step down of S R monies. And now having to accept some of those positions and funding for those positions in the local budget. Um, guidance counselor for K to two schools, um, halftime speech pathologist for K to two, uh, which is related to uh, IEP needs. Summer academies for targeted supplemental instruction. And then added funding to um, meet the needs of our incoming special education students and and meet the goals of their IEPs. Uh, that includes four additional special services, ed tech three positions is way it um. Also access and inclusion, as I mentioned, for our increasing population of English language learners. Um, and then also looking at how we can best address literacy support and learning gaps for our students. Uh, through the grades. So again, those um, core budget proposals uh, are the same as. As has previously been uh, presented both in and Board of Education workshops as well as our presentation. Uh, town manager and school department presentation to the to the council. Uh, which also included a proposal for expanded shared services. Accepting funding for community services, field maintenance workers. As well as a contribution to have a dedicated vehicle for a middle school school resource officer. Uh, finally, uh, at first reading, um. We were. Uh, a total education budget of a percent change and expenditures of six point four seven percent increase. With the tax request at seven point two eight percent. Since then. And this also outlines our school capital budget. Inclusive of um. The estimated cost of a new primary school elementary school building. Some adjustments that I was mentioning since that um, first reading with with the school board. Um, some pretty significant adjustments in studs subsidy. So initially on the twenty-eighth of March, which was. The night before our presentation to the council, perfectly timed. Um, our allocation, our uh, general purpose aid allocation had increased by. Um, a little over one and a half million. This was further adjusted uh, just recently on the twenty-eighth of April and actually reduced by four hundred eighty-two thousand. Part of that increase. They. We're not still trying to track down exactly what happened, but there was a pre-K allocation that was factored factored into that. Increase um, that was subsequently removed on the twenty-eighth. So. Our current increase in subsidies subsidy is still slightly over uh, one million. And then we had anthem premium rates that was a three point seven percent increase versus the eight percent that we had budgeted. Um, so that's, that puts us at two hundred eighty thousand to the good. Debt service projections decreased. We had a couple of um. Uh, also decreases in energy and fuel cost projections. But then um, a higher projection for facilities insurance based on um, a recent appraisal. Factoring in all those adjustments, um, an additional adjustment. Uh, reduction in the general purpose aid. Now puts us at about a um. Percent increase of four point four nine percent. And that's as of May first.
Are there any questions for for Jeff, for the board? Councilor Hamel?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. It's always great to get good news, you know, even if it's late in coming, you know, and the eve of presentations, things so. So that's really wonderful news. I remember sitting through the the budget meetings when you were running through all this with your staff and I. I was struck by how you were trying to preserve the gain, as I recall, you know, what you had said in terms of your being able to manage through crisis and adding. Uh, specialized resources to help with the new learning needs that you've described as social, emotional and other other. Other terms. It used to be ESL, it's ELL now, I guess it is, so.
ELL, yeah.
But if I, if I look at this, what I see is you've got more funding. And so you're not really going to be. You're really restoring those those, you want to continue those jobs that you added. Um, during uh. During the past couple of years, but then what happens when, you know, next year when that funding goes away? If you haven't made, you know, other reductions in your budget. You know, to anticipate the loss of the funding, you know, at the end of this year.
That's what this, yeah, that's what this does, this with this budget. That's the last two years, in fact, have been stepping down that. Loss of of federal funding that was funding some of the positions that we needed. And now. The um, our local budget has now absorbed those positions.
So, but what I was expecting was that you were going to be making reductions or finding efficiencies in other areas. So I'm not sure I really. See that clearly, maybe I'm not interpreting. Uh, the slides correctly, but I'm not, I'm not sure I see that. Is there one slide? I mean, maybe toward the beginning you talk about that, but did you go over that again? Because I. I seem to be missing that.
I'm not sure what you're missing. Sorry, I'm not quite.
I'm not doing a very good job of explaining it back. Liam, can you pull up the slides again and I'll go to the, you know, just scroll through them and I'll turn point to the one I'm thinking of. No, no. I'll go back. You're uh, you're adding funding. And go one.
I think go up, go up too.
So.
Right there, reducing, is that what you're asking about?
Right. You're reducing funding. Can you, can you make that larger? So. Those of us who. Thank you. So you're reducing funding by those things, which by my math is. About uh. It's it's less than a million, right? It's. It's a lot less than a million.
That adds up to. That adds up to about quarter of a million, but in one of our meetings Kate had mentioned, there's actually, I think those were some of the bigger items. Um, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, um. I had written notes that Kate had said there was total cuts of about eight hundred thousand. You can tell me if my. My notes are wrong.
No, that's, that's correct. I think that the, I'm sorry, I I just sort of appeared out of nowhere.
Our new teleport. Seriously, everybody were here. I was, I thought I was channeling my inner Kate in my last response. I'm like, hey. You really is here.
I feel like a stealth business manager. So cool. I've never really been like a ninja before. Yeah, so Don, I think this slide goes to um, some of the review process that we talked about, the budget development process. Where we're actually having those individual meetings with each. Um, school building leader, each department head going line by line and saying, you know, what can we do? With less so that we can preserve some funds to, excuse me. To take um, take into account all of the increases that we're going to have naturally. Uh, we know we're going to have naturally occurring increases because eighty percent of our budget is people, so you're going to have salary and benefit increases. So we go through this exercise that says, okay, well, where can we cut back? And, you know, obviously not a huge amount, but it's a critical exercise and it's what we do every year. As we go into this process. So that's, I think, what this slide is reflective of. It's not so much. A direct response to the loss of of the uh, COVID-related funds. Um, but it's definitely an exercise that we paid extra attention to this year because of that. Or for the past two years, really, as those funds have been stepping down.
The other question I had was, Anne, thank you. I think I have a clearer idea of it. I'm still, I'm still skeptical because I think when. We're talking about headcount, you know, you may offset that for a couple of years with funding or mitigate it, but then. It comes roaring back, you know, once those, you know, you don't have those funds again. So I'm still, I'm still. Missing seeing that clearly or understanding it clearly.
Don, can I ask a question real fast? Our Councilor Hamilton, um, there are no more arrest of funds in this budget, correct?
No, there are no COVID funds.
There's the code ones are gone.
I understand that, but you received uh, more funding.
Oh, were you talking about the steps?
You received more funding. And you, there was something else happen. You had an anthem favorability. These are things that are likely not to last multiple years, so they go away. And when they go away. The the old baseline, the old headcount baseline, which is, as you said, you know, the vast majority of things, eighty percent of the cost are by already. It's there, so um. You know, that's.
They don't really anticipate state subsidy going away.
Yeah, no.
The formula. It's, the formula is really the same year over year. Um, we have fluctuations, obviously, we've seen that in the past based on valuation and what's put in. To the funding by the legislature each year. So there's that volatility that can happen, but in terms of our. Plan forward. That funding is far less volatile and far less likely to. Decline dramatically than what we've seen in this, the with the crazy federal grants that have come through.
May I, may I make an attempt? I I. I think I'm hearing you say you're asking about the headcount in relation to the to the funding. So am I just, I just want to see if I can clear up. Are you, are you talking about the positions that were S R funded or COVID funded? Is that really what you're asking about?
I mean, it's it's easier when you have a headcount chart, and I will say this in general, I'm an HR guy, so I tend to look at headcount, uh, FTEs, that sort of thing, so. I don't think, you know, either the school or the town side, we've had a good view of what's happened with headcount and what are the ratios we might. Have for that in terms of, uh, you know, teachers for student, that sort of thing. So that, you know, when I have those numbers, I have a better handle on. Figuring out what average costs are and what what, you know, contractual agreements will do. So that's why I was. You know, pleasantly surprised by what you did with Anthem, but you know, those, what happened with Anthem, but those things tend to be unpredictable.
Right, and and, you know. Can be completely out of your control. So so you try and, you know, at least with uh, you know, what the anthem percentage is going to be, you try and anticipate what could be the worst case scenario and then. Hope for the best, you know, and there there are some years where actually last year was worse than what we budgeted.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so um. That's a little different, you know, as far as. Um, the the federally granted. The grant-funded positions, um. That that Scarborough used federal S R funds for. Um, as I mentioned before, part of the enrollment dip was, it was like a V. In Scarborough, right? Like, we lost some kids. Um, K to twelve pandemic related again, which is, which is um. Common in all communities, but that rebounded. Um, quite quickly. And so, uh, in order to maintain, you know, kind of. What the board has determined is, you know. Ideal or adequate or range class sizes. Um, we needed to retain most of those positions. Uh, and that's with that slide. Do I have it up? Um, I think it's the next, yeah, um. Right, yeah, uh, no, back, that was it. So um, retaining three out of those four positions. Even though they're no longer federally funded, they're now taken on by our local budget. Was critical to maintain appropriate class size. And and, you know, again, going back to what our students need. Uh, post pandemic.
Well, it's interesting to me how it's, it seems when I went through those reviews and the more I hear and learn. Uh, I have a sister who's an elementary art teacher. She tells me what classes are like, uh. And the sort of thing that, uh, things they have to go through and now where they are in terms of. People coming back to school and getting used to being in classrooms again. So I, it's interesting to me how it seems like the focus and the challenge here. Uh, is really, you you talked about K two, but then the other facility things are K three, K eight, but it seems like the. The upper grades are okay in terms of staff levels and most of the new needs are. You know, earlier in the game, is that a safe statement? I mean, that's. Or is it not true? It seems like this is what you're staffing is trying to address.
I would add that if you think about what happened during the pandemic for our youngest learners. Who weren't in class, right? So if you look at this year's third graders, for example, they missed half of their kindergarten year. And their whole first grade year was hybrid. And so there are a lot of foundational skills that are taught during those two critical years. And so we're still rebounding from that because in general, right? A third grade teacher wouldn't be teaching a child how to read.
Yep.
Right? They would have already established those skills, but you can't necessarily teach those skills in the same way. Over Zoom or even in a two day a week in person model. Right? And so we're noticing some really, you know. Greater differences with our younger students in that way. So that's pretty typical.
I'm very supportive of this. And I think this is really where it will all count. And this is really where the greatest needs are. What I would like to see is a little bit more of a focus on. Equipment, you know, vehicles, that kind of stuff, where are those really essential? Or are there some things you could do without with or another year or two? So I, I still, you know, I'm still coming up a little bit short on that stuff. But anyway, that's just me and I'm one of seven people last time I counted and. I'm reminded of that quite often. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Any other questions?
So one of the questions that I've been asking in the finance committee, I'm going to ask it, but I'm not going to ask you to answer right away. Was if you feel like your department is currently the size that it needs to be to meet the needs of the residents and the students that live in Scarborough. I have two kids in the school system. I think most people know that right now. So I think some of my questions are specific to my experience within the school. So you're adding a position for an ESL teacher and it's just one. And I'm just really wondering if that was a compromise or if that was what you really think. Is necessary. I'm going to tell you as an example that my son is in third grade, fourth grade, fourth grade. And he is in a class with three children that do not speak English and I'm a little concerned that. We're actually grouping them together for convenience because we don't have a translator and I can tell you that it has been somewhat disruptive to his education. And the environment throughout the whole time. And so when I think of that example, I look at one and I'm like, no way. I just really feel like maybe you guys have made a compromise and I just wonder if that's really going to meet your need. And then also I watched the March workshop. That you guys held, I think it was the March fifteenth once, and I feel like Chris from director of. Special services was saying that he had up to like thirty five new kids coming in. Or I believe there was a substantial amount of new special ed kids already in the queue coming up for next year. And so when I look at, you have. Special ed, I think you were adding for ed techs. First question was, can ed techs actually implement an IP? My understanding was you need a special ed teacher. So is that correct?
Yeah, sure.
We got an extra mic. Oh, I got my old table. So, yeah, so Karen, it depends on the level of ed techs, right? There's three different levels of certification for ed techs. So ed tech twos and threes basically can provide instruction. Under the supervision, indirect supervision of a special education teacher. Yep.
And then what did I hear correctly that you have the largest number coming in? That you've ever seen.
We do. We have actually, at last count, forty students entering kindergarten with IEPs this fall and, you know, in the past, a typical number for us would be somewhere between. Twenty five, maybe thirty on a year with a lot of kids coming in. So this is a very significant increase of what we've seen in the past. We've got about, I think, at last count, one eighty, one hundred eighty-five.
We have one hundred eighty-five incoming kindergarten since current time. Yep. Can I, it's and wish four months out. So lots of people not registered, I'm sure.
I am registered. I just. Friday, thinking. And I made, I made the joke that I didn't want to be one of those people that contributes to that five percent number in September. Penny is accounted for. Can you speak just really quickly to, so you're saying we have forty students with no naive coming in as kindergartners? How many in a typical year do we add? You know, to our level of services from the kindergarten class? So how many unidentified students in a typical year would you project?
Yeah, great question. And I don't know off the top of my head what that average number would be, but. What I can tell you, and I think this goes back to a little bit of what Diane talked about, with some of the needs we're seeing at this age that. We currently have over forty referrals for special education at our K two buildings. I think we're at forty one or forty two for the year now. Last year we had forty at the end of the school year and that was. Again, probably ten kids more than we're talking about in a typical year. So this is the most we've ever had and I've been here. A long time, probably twenty years doing this. So. You know, and those are coming from both teachers and from parents, right? So I think that's another, you know, data point that we would look at and say, this is. You know, what we're seeing in terms of impact for kids for sure.
Generally, I think my questioning or point is I worry that maybe this isn't enough. But I understand that you guys have compromises that you have to make. Switching gears a little bit, my understanding is that you guys are taking over the management of booking fields in all that stuff. Is that correct? And so I noticed that there was software that you guys are buying. Is it just that the, is it because community services has software that's no longer usable?
It was really just to streamline and be more efficient.
Yeah.
Recognizing the fact that as far as like facilities and fields. I think it's roughly eighty, eighty-five percent of. Of that usage is us anyway. Firstly, and, and, and secondly. It was like the process of booking it, it would go to the town and then back to us anyway. You know, for final approval and authorization. So we decided to remove a step and just, you know. Take, you know, take over that and then also be able to utilize the software that we're using for. Multiple reasons. It was just. How it was being done was just not a very, not very efficient.
And to clarify for some feedback that I've gotten, just because the school is taking over the management, that does not mean that the school gets priority. Over the fields.
The, how it, like the. How it's booked or, you know, in terms of like the requirements that is still the same. It's just a process that's been streamlined.
To be clear, we haven't so far taken over any of the outdoor facilities. We're only doing. And Tom was, I'm sure opening his mouth to say that this has been a very long and long process and that it's been a slow transition and. We've started out by taking care of the inside. Facilities and mostly to just point because we're the ones using them ninety percent of the time and there's such. An impact from the school programming on those facilities.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the policy in terms of use, I don't believe has changed. The school has always had priority, certainly. For their organized sports and programs. So we're very pleased. We're, it has been slow in transition, but we're really pleased to have made that switch.
Yeah, I'm just in a world of private clubs, so we're always at the bottom tier, which will always be at the bottom tier for space. And the last question I had was kind of just a big picture sort of one. You guys sent a lot of information to us, Kate. Thank you so much. One of the spreadsheets that you shared with us was actually the cost per student in the state per year. Which is a really interesting.
I love that.
I do too. I know. And, um. So, you know, I just, I thought it was really interesting because Scarborough is one. Sixth on that list. So there in the state, it looks like we are the sixth highest paying per student. So that's, it says right now. I think this is the most up to date for twenty one, twenty two Scarborough was paying eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars per student. And that's. Like I said, I think the sixth highest and then we only had six above us. And I didn't know if. If there was a general response as to why you feel like we're so high. I'm new to finance. You know, I think, oh, we're a big community. Are we, is there? I thought, you know, the bigger you are, maybe there's more cost savings available. And I didn't know if there was kind of an initial response to you as to why we kind of are so high. I can see right from here that it's pretty much all Cumberland County. That is paying the most.
Right. So what I think the fancy spreadsheet that you're looking at with the green and the, and the yellow, it actually is only a selected group of. Of school districts and. We have used the same cohort over recent years. For a number of reasons, because we're similar in size, we're similar in location, we're similar in valuation to those other communities. School population factors into it. And it's also a set, a subset of school districts that we use to compare with when we're doing. Collective bargaining where we're looking around and saying, okay, who are our. Competitors in terms of attracting teachers and, you know, when. When we want to put a contract together for compensation for employees, are we competitive with those districts? So to answer your question, I think we are, are fairly similar with those other districts. I think one of the most interesting things about that spreadsheet, not that I'm a spreadsheet geek at all. It's the, the second set, the second tab where you can look at where those funds go.
Yes.
And I think if you take a look at where those funds go, and these are, these, this is data that is provided. Across the board, across all districts in the state of Maine by the Department of Education, and it's supposed to be comparable data because they're collecting it in the same way from each district. And they're collecting it and reporting it in those categories that the voters vote on. So it's very specific where the funds are going to. One of the things you'll notice if you look at that second tab is that Scarborough is very high in. Special education, very high in debt service. We've heard a lot of. Conversation about both of those things, right? Because. Our special education programs are amazing and we have some very high costs in them. Our debt service is high because Scarborough has invested in their schools without the benefit of contribution from. State funding in most cases. But the citizens have been willing to put forward funds towards the schools. And so, you know, our, our debt service in comparison with some of those other districts who have received state funding. For construction projects, for example, is going to be higher. So I think for me, it's more interesting to note that we're kind of in the middle in terms of the overall spending. But if you look at the details, where are those monies actually going in Scarborough? And I don't think I answered your question at all, but.
No, but.
I talked around it a lot.
Spreadsheet a little bit more. And that's all. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor Katerina?
Yeah, mine aren't questions, mine are comments. And I, I had perspective because my first year in the council in twenty thirteen, I think it was. The school budget request came in at about thirteen percent. So I just want to put that in perspective for the rest of you. That I think this is great. This is awesome. And I personally don't think it's a bad thing to have high spending per student. You know, as long as, you know, when you're breaking out, it's not all going to admin or what, whatever. And, and I will tell you as a real estate broker that quite frankly. I'm sorry, I, I'm responsible for some of the special ed. That of people, because seriously, I have people who want to buy in Scarborough because of special ed. That's offered in Scarborough. They're attracted to the school system because of the quality of education that we provide for all students. So, you know, I blame me for some of it, I guess. But, you know, I just think we need to keep in mind that, you know. Spending per student's not necessarily bad. Oh. Just my two cents was.
That's a coochie. So I think we're going to see each other again tomorrow. This isn't so much a question, but it's something to think about in the interim. You know, we just had the audit presentation. It looks like we're, we're running a pretty good surplus. With the latest fiscal, fiscal, fiscal year that was audited. Are we being realistic here? Like, like our budget's going up. Some, can we, are we really going to be able to fill all these positions next year? Or is there? Is there some cushion or some room to, to trim? And. I just want to think about that. I wanted to try to understand it a little bit better. And. The other thing is debt around debt service, we, we currently finance or we use debt for our school buses. At the same time, the school department's giving back to the town about one point six billion in fund balance this year. I'm intrigued at the possibility of, you know, what if you didn't give that back? We have pretty high interest rates now and we use that. For capital that we currently use debt for. That's, that's something that I'd be intrigued to learn a little bit more about. Is it some? Point, we should be making that transition for recurring capital items. And I'd be, I'd be supportive of starting, taking a step in that direction anyways. Those are my two thoughts. I might have more tomorrow or reserve the right.
Any other? Comments? No? So I just have one comment, well, a couple of comments. I'm one very supportive of, of what you guys have put forward. So I think. Thank you for, for doing all the good work that you're doing. This is probably not necessarily tied to this year's budget, but more thinking about future year budgets. So. We haven't really talked about the new school, which is, you know, a huge. Debt that's going to be hitting us in the future. And so I know some of that will likely be offset by operating expenses. And I don't know if you guys have those final numbers yet, or if we'll be digging into those at the next. Workshop where we'll. On May seventeenth. So I think that'll be. One factor that will help to offset, you know, the additional debt service that we'll be getting because of. Of a debt that large. I'm just curious, have you guys started to think and talk a little bit about other strategies going forward? To try and mitigate costs so that we can. Absorb that much of a, a debt to the town without having to significantly increase or have a notable increase, I should say, to. The taxpayer. So again, maybe that's not something you thought about, but again, I think that's something we should be discussing as we talk about the school going forward to make sure. We're thinking about, you know, how do we in future years offset that, that big debt burden?
Yeah, to your point, I, I think that the council will be pleasantly pleased with. The savings that will be demonstrated through the business case. Just in terms of, although it's not finalized and looking at the pieces that, you know, on the school side, we were responsible for, aside from the work that Harriman's been doing for us. It's pretty remarkable.
Great. That's great to hear. We're looking forward to seeing that at the, the next workshop. All right. Any, any other comments or questions? No? All right. Well, thank you all for, for your time today. Appreciate it. And I guess we will be reconvening at seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Before we completely adjourn, John, when is, when and where is your meeting tomorrow? Just so the public knows and.
Yeah, I believe we will be meeting right here. And I believe it starts at four o'clock.
Well, great. Just a quick comment for April, the first day of school for your fourth child. That's a very underrated day.
Don't even get me started. I don't need to cry in public.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? The, the extra cost, this is the shared services positions for community services. I think the cost was a hundred and thirty-four thousand or some such thing, forty-three. And then ten thousand for a dedicated SRO vehicle. Those were not included in the first read in the proposed budget. Correct?
They were included in the one that you used in your presentation, but not in the one that the board voted on.
I guess the final numbers that Jeff reviewed. You know, based on where you are.
Those do include.
They do include that. That's my question. Thank you.
The final numbers, the adjusted numbers, I actually have, oh, guess what? A spreadsheet. In pretty colors, that is sort of the where we are now. It has the details of that one slide that says all the things that have moved since first reading. So if anybody would like one of those. Was going to bring them with us tomorrow and. I know we're going to dive a little deeper.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Don, we didn't get all good news tonight. We lost a half million in state funding, which I just heard, just learned. So that's significant.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, guys. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right. I am calling this meeting to order. Today is May 3. It is 7 o'clock. This is our normally scheduled town council meeting. Will everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Next up is roll call. Tody, would you mind calling the roll?
Here.
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 Here. All right. Item number four is general public comment. If there's anybody in the public or online who would like to comment on something not on the agenda. If you could come up to the podium or raise your hand online.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hamel and I live on Bay Street in Pine Point. And I've been following the school project closely over the last few months. Certainly it's been going on for a long time and I give this building committee a lot of credit for all their time and effort. And finally, after something like thirty meetings during the last year, a site has been selected. And that's what I wanted to focus on tonight. First, Goral Palmer, a local civil engineering and planning firm, has assisted the building committee with the site selection process. Elton Palmer, one of the founders of the firm, led the effort and presented at the last two building committee meetings. But this firm also happens to represent Crossroads Holdings in its development approval process with the town. Goral Palmer's website states, quote, "Their principles are directly involved in each and every design, engineering and planning project we service." Does this mean that while helping our building committee locate a site for the new school, the firm was at the very same time actively involved in assisting the Downs with its planning activities? It certainly appears to be the case. Whose side is Goral Palmer on? The client doing a one-time site selection? Or the client with many large, complex, multi-year projects? I'm sure they would say they are completely neutral and unbiased, maybe even different people working on different parts of these. Maybe they are. But this certainly appears to be a conflict of interest. And when it comes to conflicts of interest, appearance is very important. It's as important as reality. As negotiations for the land are underway, I hope that the town takes great care in its role as a steward of our tax dollars. And I hope there is a very good explanation of why the building committee chose to use Goral Palmer. The second thing, the building committee has also taken great pains to show how transparent the process has been. They boast about public input to the process. They have a map of Scarborough with a grid showing the town divided into various sections, which they use to show how much public support there is for the location they've selected. The map shows that seventy-three percent of the public chose an area, which included the Downs. Another area got only nine percent support and a third area got thirteen, got eighteen percent. What they don't tell you is that this was based on a poll of the eleven people who attended that meeting. One person equals nine percent, two people eighteen percent, and so on. Using figures like this is deceptive and borders on dishonesty. Most meetings with the building committee have been very poorly attended by the public. What this says to me is the building committee does not really have a good idea of how much support there is to put this school in the Downs. It sure seemed like a gamble to me to wait until November for the only meaningful public support, public input. And finally, I just want to say a word about the business case. In two weeks, the B of A, the Board of Ed will present revised numbers, which will likely show that the consolidated school makes the most sense for Scarborough. And Harriman has been updating their analysis that they did originally in twenty seventeen, when the project started. The conclusion at that time was that it would not be cost-effective to do, to redo the two, the three elementary schools. At this point, Harriman and the building committee are working to defend the mega school. They are not looking for creative and possibly more cost-effective ways to solve the issues. And it is possible that the mega school would be the best solution, but if we do not seriously consider other options, including not abandoning the education model of neighborhood schools we've used for over a century, I believe we are making a mistake. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment on something not on the agenda? No? Oh, and we do have one online, so. Yes. All right, Mr. Fortier, we're gonna allow you to talk. Do I need to click anything? Looks like, Mr. Fortier, if you unmute, you'll be able to speak.
Yeah, good evening, Counselor Anderson. This item is on the agenda, so I, you know, I'm happy to provide public comment, but I, if there's be an opportunity to provide comment later on this specific agenda or item related to the school, I'd be happy to do that at that time.
We can, we can wait for that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay. All right. All right, with that, then I am closing general public comment. Next item is item number five, minutes from our April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting. Can I get a motion?
To move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a question. So I read the minutes and it's interesting to me that, you know, they were great, the minutes were great, very clear. But also, I recall that there was a reference that this was also to be referred to the videotape, so I'm I'm kind of curious on minutes because I've had a lot of practice with doing minutes and also speaking a lot on YouTube, so. What is controlling? Tom, can you help us with what controls there and how to use? How should we view minutes and how, how should we treat the video?
Minutes are certainly must, must include who attended the meeting, who's any public comment collected and, and certainly record any official votes taken. Beyond that, I won't say everything else is extraneous, but those are the absolute essentials that ought to be contained in the official meeting minutes. Very often those minutes will expand and include discussion items, but that's really for helpful context perhaps, but not a requirement.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, any other discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Next item is item number six, adjustments to the agenda. I believe there is one potential adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you allow, I'd like to make a motion to move order number twenty-three dash zero four eight, the act to authorize the town managers to conduct the land appraisal. From the last item on the agenda up to the, toward the front of the agenda to follow the first reading and public hearing from the school on the budget.
All right, I will second that for discussion. Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? Right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item is item seven, items to be signed treasurers warrants. I find those right before the meeting. And item number eight is the town manager report. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the suggestion of council leadership, I will be including at least a bulletized version of, I guess, a hint of the subject area that I'll cover. I do reserve the right to add things. Oftentimes, things will happen between Friday and, in the meeting day. But we'll work down through the list. I think one thing I'd like to add right at the top is just an update from Liam regarding the marijuana working group and kind of the timeline and process that he sees over the next month or so.
Sure, thank, thank you, Tom. So the, the working group has convened a series of meetings at this point largely with, with some stated goals of, of kind of understanding the issues, so doing some, some general education around the ordinance and, and the state of kind of marijuana and Scarborough and state statutes. And we've really focused our attention and discussions on improvements to the ordinance specifically to address the odor concerns generally associated with cultivation, but perhaps not exclusively so. We do have another scheduled meeting tomorrow evening after finance committee, where I think a lot of the discussion will center around not only those order mitigation standards and improvements, but also some, a new path forward on enforcement, which I think has been a bit sparse in the current ordinance to provide staff with some direction and license holders with some expectations moving forward. I do, I do anticipate bringing forward proposed ordinance changes, at least for a first look at ordinance committee next week. And then I think that there's a quite a lot of urgency and desire to see some of those changes be brought to council as quickly as possible for some additional discussion and revision. So that's the rough timeline.
Thank you, Liam. I'd like to give an update quickly on Comfort Inn. This seems to be a reoccurring topic. I'm hopeful that we are kind of moving into a next phase. The, the hotel is undergoing a fairly major renovation. I see major new carpet, new furniture in many of the rooms. That's certainly a vast improvement. In fact, staff was on site today for about three hours doing a full top to bottom inspection, and this is really part of their annual inkeeper license renewal process. I've yet to see that report, but they were certainly pleased to gain access, full access to the facility. And if, if their past reports suggest anything, they'll be very thorough and really provide a very good assessment of the condition inside and out of that facility. At this point, it's my understanding that approximately ten rooms remain to be occupied, five of which are supposed to be vacated by the end of this week. And then four of the remaining five by May eighteenth, so we are approaching the point that they advised us they would get to around the first of the year, which is completing their transition plan and moving back to kind of business as usual and renting out those rooms to the, to the general public. I have made the decision to discontinue the food delivery. We've continued that throughout as, at the end of April, just given the the willing numbers, we decided it just wasn't productive anymore. And certainly provided notice to those recipients, so we've moved away from that at this point. And the last piece I'll just mention, late last week, we became aware that there were, I believe it's federal money, but the emergency rental assistance program, which is the fund, federal funding that has really supported this operation and others in, in the nation. There's additional funding that would carry existing guests through June. And at least the Comfort Inn has indicated that they have no interest in pursuing that, so. Again, I think they're staying true to their word and transitioning back to normal, normal lodging use. On another matter, the Gorm Connector, this is a proposed new highway that would connect essentially the ninety-five corridor in the main mall area, if you will, traversing largely through Scarborough and Gorum and connecting it to the Rotary there to South Gorm Village. This is a project that's been over ten years in kind of conversation. Gee, Marie, I, I hear snickering a bit. It's actually been thirty years of discussion, but this most recent effort has been about ten years. And I was part of a, an op-ed piece that appeared last Saturday in the Press Herald that just simply was kind of reminding public and raising awareness. We do expect by late summer, early fall, there'll be a full new alignment that can be shared, and I think that should start conversation, we hope, more generally and vigorously in the region. So I'm pleased to be part of that effort. This is one of the council goals under the topic of transportation, so pleased to be part of that effort. As regards the Ad Hoc Community Center Advisory Committee, this council approved of the charge at your last meeting. We have built out a full new webpage, providing all the updated content in terms of the new charge. We've also created an application form unique to this position that's available at that point. I know it was highlighted quite well in our last newsletter, easy newsletter. And so our goal over the next month or so is to solicit membership from some, from our residents. We also have some specific reach outs. Those will be to the Community Services Advisory Committee that I believe has two positions to be on this new committee. And also the prior committee that served. We, many of us that were part of that really appreciated the, the real talent and expertise of many of those members. And it'd be great to have that continuity. So our goal is to make those solicitations have all of that information in time for the appointments committee to consider them at their next meeting in June. So I think we're well on our way in that regard. Eastern Trail, I'll just try to provide an update every couple of weeks. Unfortunately, this thing is moving at a snail's pace, but we do have a meeting scheduled with CMP on May twenty-fifth, which we're anxious to re-engage with them and understand what, if any, reservations they have from prior commitments. And we're still endeavoring to meet with CSX, which is the, the new owner of the Pan Am Railway. I've mentioned in the past, we do plan an all-board summit. This will be a, an evening on June eighth. We're still searching for a location. More than likely, it'll be what we're school, just to accommodate what could be a hundred or more people. But essentially, this is an evening where we invite all members of boards and committees in one evening, and it's really intended to be a bit of idea sharing for sure, but also just meet and greet. Many of these folks don't necessarily have the, ever had the occasion to kind of intersect, so. We've done this in the past with some success. This year, we're going to focus the attention on what committees are doing in line with council goals. So we think that will be a good kind of rallying point and a way to coordinate the thoughts and conversation that night. With regard to the comprehensive plan, I've reported, I think at the last meeting, we are now deemed complete inconsistent is the term, and that's with the State's Growth Management Act. To get there, we did have to provide some supplemental information that I've shared out with council. These are all, this is all data or information that existed in one place or another. It would just had to be consolidated so they could complete their review and checklist against their standards. We have taken this matter to the long-range planning committee, who's been really the quarterback of this effort. And they met today at a lengthy discussion, and that discussion will continue at the next meeting. Regardless of the recommendation, I'm, I'm, I'll be recommending the council take some sort of action to at least approve adding the appendices, two appendices to the plan. The plan is so important that I don't want to do anything to question that we didn't follow a thorough and complete adoption process. So you can expect that will come back to you perhaps in late June at this point. I think it makes sense to let long range have their way with it and provide review and comments before you consider it. Just an update generally on the Downs traffic moving permit. This is maybe off your radar screen, but it's certainly alive and well and very much part of staff's life, lives right now. This includes a very aggressive construction schedule that touches, touches, I believe, thirty-four intersections over a five-year period. We've completed the first year and we're now just kind of entering into year two, and we've learned some lessons. They're already behind schedule, not necessarily because of their problems, but with supply chain and so it just made sense for us to kind of reassess things and we've met with the Downs and we'll be approaching the state not to change the overall project list, but to reshuffle it slightly to make it a bit more manageable, to gain some efficiencies, to actually combine with some town projects. We think it's a better plan, so I'll continue to keep you updated, but we, we've had some productive meetings. We just fear that if we don't reshuffle things, we're going to be behind eight ball all the way through, and it's not comfortable for staff or for them. And we want to get these improvements in place and up and running, so we can all enjoy them as soon as possible. Some counselors have received some input regarding, I guess it's a budget proposal, but we've proposed this year to implement our carry-in, carry-out policy at Higgins Beach. This is something we've done kind of systematically at other beaches over the last couple of years, Pine Point and Ferry. I'll say with some success. That has a lot to do with us really managing our costs and complications with trash collection on the beach itself. Higgins, as many of us have come to expect, appreciate, is a, is a bit of a unique situation, just given the high-intent use and kind of the small footprint of the beach. And so Todd Souza, who oversees these programs, has come up with a bit of a compromise, which is not deploying barrels at the end of all the dead-end streets that have access points to the beach, but consolidating a few along Bayview where we have staff really predominantly stationed throughout the summer months and also at the parking lots. So I think it's a good step in that direction. And ultimately, just to be clear and fair to this, we'd love to get to the official carry-in, carry-out. That's our goal. A few other items, if I could. Co-op parking, I think I've mentioned in the past in coordination with the Coastal Waters Committee. We have been working with the Stern Restaurant, who operates a seasonal restaurant in the co-op building. We do have a lease with them for twenty-five spaces. They are not necessarily defined, but they are really experiencing Uh, but they are really um, experiencing some extreme challenges, particularly midday, the lunch crowd uh, to find a space for native patrons. So we're doing a trial run for the season and will allow placement of signs along the back of the parking lot next to the restrooms uh, for 10 spaces. And we're just want to see how that's going to work. And so uh, I'll certainly keep you advised. It's a, it's an area of uh, intense interest and, and attention. And so I'm sure we'll get feedback. Lastly, not lastly, uh, I beg your pardon. Um, a construction project update real quick. Uh, Gorm Road is up and running. Any of us that have gone through there, you can appreciate it, but drainage work is, is undergoing, is, is underway. Uh, it'll be followed by curb sidewalk and then a full reconstruction of this phase uh, work to be completed by the end of Ju- July. Highland Avenue is a project that was funded last uh, last budget year. Um, where we've received some resident feedback that we, we're taking seriously in terms of encroachment, not encroachment, but impact on private homes. Uh, and also we have a, a, you know, a, a sense that we probably don't have enough budget to do the project originally envisioned. Uh, we have the plans done. Uh, I'm inclined to go to bed and see what those numbers are. But I think at the same time, I bring it up just to say that we're prepared to pivot. Uh, one of the things that comes to mind, this was uh, exclusively a pedestrian safety improvement, and I'm not minimizing uh, how important that would be. But there was also conversation at the finance level about how, you know, what other improvements could we make to existing sidewalks? Or maybe connection of other systems that weren't considered. So I may come back to the council and suggest we re-uh, allocate those funds, if you will, still pedestrian improvements with perhaps a different project. So uh, stay tuned. Um, I'll bring up the topic a bit um, cautiously. Um, uh, dogs in the beach has been a, an issue that's been challenging in this town. We've, we found a bit of a compromise over the last decade or so that is very tenuous. Uh, every year it's kind of gets pushed and pulled, but uh, I just bring it up because I've been hearing rumblings from different sources, and I just wanted to be sure the council is aware. I'm, I know the community advisory committee has had conversation around uh, dogs and just overall um, uh, challenges on the beach, dogs and human interaction and contact and sometimes conflict. Uh, but we also have heard uh, reports on Western Beach of dogs being off leash and um, wandering into the uh, twined areas for the endangered species. So um, I'm hopeful that we don't have to unearth this and go back into it because it is a, a challenging conversation, but I, I feel I must just make you aware that there are conversations being had. And at some point, I, I expect you'll hear about them as well. Uh, foreshadowing next week, uh, this is the time of year we do license renewals. So uh, uh, special amusement licenses, all of those do come before you and they will be on your agenda on 17th. Uh, the town clerk has decided to bring two innkeeper licenses to your attention and consideration, those being comforted in and extended stay. And we use the same metric that you provided to us last year with number of calls. Uh, all the other ones were really comfortably within range and felt as though that didn't deserve your attention at this point. And last thing, I just want to recognize that uh, this week is municipal clerk's week, and I wanted to thank Tody for all of her work. I know she's done a great job with uh, recognizing your staff all week, and I just want to take this time to recognize her. So that was a lot. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for, for actually putting, putting it on paper for us to kind of have an advance. I appreciate that.
The truth be known, I usually do this about an hour before the meeting, so this is a big deal for me.
I'm glad we stuck the bullet points for starters.
Are there any questions for Tom? No. All right. So moving on to order number 23 dash 029, 7pm, public hearing on proposed amendments to chapter 405, the zoning ordinance, section nine, performance standards with small scale energy facilities. Do you want to set this one up, Tom?
I gave it on the way down, so. Yes, uh, this is just for public hearing this evening. I beg your pardon. This is just for public hearing this evening. Um, I think this has been pretty thoroughly introduced at ordinance and, and before this, this group, and I don't recall any substantive questions. Um, I do want to note, uh, perhaps uh, you have noticed in the planning board minutes, uh, planning board chair Hendrickson did raise an issue of uh, fire safety around these types of facilities. Uh, the matter was taken up with the fire department. They felt comfortable that those uh, issues would, would be addressed in cycle and review. So they don't have a, any input as regards the ordinance changes, but they will certainly be uh, very keen to look at these as they come through the cycle and review process.
Right. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this item, either in the room or online? Okay, I am not seeing anybody. So I am closing public comment. Next up is order number 23 dash 028, second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter 405, the zoning ordinance, section six, zoning ordinance definitions, outdoor storage, and section nine, performance standards, general parking and storage.
Yes, this was, this really addresses an issue the staff has observed for quite some time, which is uh, currently um, commercial vehicles that are part of the business are categorized by our ordinance as outdoor storage and they're, they're not allowed. It's simply, in our view, isn't practical. Obviously, businesses need to have uh, business vehicles parked on the premises. So this, this intends to uh, remove commercial vehicles from the outdoor storage definition and actually allow up to four commercial vehicles on property on, at businesses. If there are more than four, I believe they can do that, but there needs to be screening and buffering provided.
Great. Any questions for Tom? Now, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment. All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom, I had a question for you on this one. Um, you had mentioned that, that there's going to be a certain number of vehicles. There needs to be screening. So say, for example, and not, not picking on anybody, but you know, my daily drive up and down Pine Point Road, there's several vehicles, you know, in the snowcanning road area. Does that mean there'd have to be some sort of screening around? And I, I know this is a really, you know, granular question, but does that, would that apply to a place like that?
I believe this, this really deals with uh, with vehicles that are uh, marked or tagged somehow that are clearly part of that business.
I see.
If I'm recalling correctly, the sort of vehicles that I recall around that facility uh, don't seem to belong to anyone's business. They
No.
But this is really intended to be very clearly designated commercial vehicles.
Thank you.
It looks like Liam has something to offer.
This, this is, this is a change the zoning in many zones, but light industrial, industrial is not included in this. They already have permitted outdoor, outdoor storage of vehicles.
Thank you.
Great. Any other discussion items? No. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on to new business. Onto order number 23 dash 043, first reading and schedule a public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 municipal school budget. So Tom, are you or Councilor Cucci going to set this one up?
I'd love to. Yes, I gave, I donated my budget book to the library because I, I don't use paper very much. Um, but this is the, this is the proposed budget. This is what Tom and the Board of Education brought to us a, a little over a month ago. This is the basis for what we approved. What we approve is actually in front of you. It's only a couple of pages. Um, but it's important. The details are important. And, and at the top line, we authorize spending for each of the different departments. Um, this first reading is based off of the proposed budget. Okay, so it's not, uh, I helped pull it together with town staff's uh, assistants. Uh, but I, I didn't change any of the substance. Okay, that's something that we can do now that it's in our court. Um, should we, should, should we choose? So uh, there's some details that I think it's worth you uh, understanding. You know, for each department, how much spending are we going to allow? For the Department of Education, how much spending are we, are we going to allow? There's some estimates for revenue that are in there that contribute to the, the final tax rate that, or what, the amount that we collect from the taxpayer. Um, one change that I, I made this year that is, is new was there's a number of funding sources that have flowed into this document uh, from whether it be impact fees or reserve accounts. And when we utilize those funds in the budget, I thought it made sense to call them out specifically in the budget order. So you'll notice that there's a section on that uh, for where we might be using restricted fund balance um, or committed fund balance or other reserve accounts. That's, that's all I have for an introduction. I uh, as the finance committee, we're not inflicting our own will here. So if there's uh, issues, concerns uh, with what has been proposed for the budget, it'd be helpful for us to understand that from our fellow counselors as we work through the details um, and identify what might be opportunities or, or deficiencies.
Just, just to follow up by way of introduction, I, 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 I really applaud Councilor Clucci for pushing us to kind of provide further clarity and actually have the council uh, take a number of different actions. There certainly is appropriation taken here, action taken here. There's also authorization to utilize existing funds. That's not an appropriation. You're just um, agreeing to use these existing funds. And then I also say there's an acknowledgement. There are things in this budget uh, such as the school building project that require voter approval, that you don't have the authority to appropriate. Uh, so that, those get um, you know, recognition uh, but short of approval, if you will.
That's my introduction. Right. Great. Any questions for Councilor Cucci, Councilor Hamel?
Yes, I'll ask this question. Um, so um, you're not really expecting us to offer suggestions for revisions at this time, uh, even if we don't, is that correct?
No, uh, not at this time. I, I don't, I, I'm not expecting to amend to the first reading budget order. But as we move to second reading, I expect that we will. Uh, so how we get from first reading to second reading, it's helpful to understand uh, the sentiment of the council.
So in, in the public. So this really, there is a process and there'll be an opportunity for us to come back and see more specific things. Uh, even, even though we're not really entitled to um, provide direction to the school in terms of how to spend things. We could still make suggestions and they could, may or may not follow those and, and then we go on to a second reading. Is that correct?
There's a few specific numbers that we can change that will cause them to reevaluate.
Right. That will give me time to refine my questions, I think, from the earlier presentation they had. So, thank you.
Great. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no, no comment. Uh, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I, I mean, I'll just say thank you to John for providing such a comprehensive first read. Um, you know, I think that this is uh, in terms of what goes out to the public and in terms of understanding what exactly we're approving and appropriating. I think this is a great step. Um, so I really appreciate the revised budget order. I think this is great.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. Uh, you know, John has really done a terrific job of, of, you know, great leadership and, and direction for us on this whole entire process and you know, he, he does this quietly and uh, you know, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into it that I don't think we fully appreciate. So I want you to, we appreciate it.
I think it'll make your amendments easier to transition from first to second reading too.
No, yeah, I just want to thank Councilor Cucci as well. I mean, this is, this is great to see it broken down like this. So thank you for putting all the time and energy and effort into it. Um, the one thing I will say, and I've shared this with the finance committee, um, you know, as you guys go through the budget process, like for me this year, what's really important is that we're thinking about how we start making changes this year in our budget to account for things like improving our fund balance, which I know in the past, those were always things that we tried to cut to find some savings. I know we, we've done that. I've done that on the finance committee the past two years that I've been on the council, thinking how do we get to that mill rate target? But as we're talking about expanding our debt and things like that, I think this may be the year to kind of make sure that we're, we're planning for the future, not just planning for this year's mill rate. So that's just something I, I hope you guys explore as you move forward. And then the same thing about, you know, the future debt burden potentially with the school. What are some choices we might need to start making this year that will probably have to carry out through multiple years, um, that maybe we haven't always explored, especially with our capital. I think, you know, Councilor Hamel and I have had some conversations of just sharing ideas where again, all of these are just trying to brainstorm ways to kind of consider the fact that we have a huge item with the school coming that we need to make sure that we're, we're planning for accordingly. And the decisions probably need to start this year and build as we go forward. But what those are, I still haven't figured out. So hopefully you guys can, can help us get there. And you know, I'll definitely, as I dig more into the budget, try and share some different ideas with you guys. All right. Any other, or concert?
So I just want to say, that's the type of sentiment that I think is very helpful for the finance committee to understand as we move through the process. Um, because we'll be looking at things with that lens. So if anybody else has similar, you know, thoughts or, or feelings, please feel free to share them. It, it will be helpful.
Great, thanks. Any other discussion? No. All right. Uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Wait, we already did, sorry, my brain. So with that, I am going to call the vote. You guys fell for my trick. Hit that on purpose.
Exactly.
Seeing who's awake. All right, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right, next up, we, we amended the agenda. So next up is order number 23 dash 048, act to authorize the town manager to conduct a land appraisal for up to 25 acres of land owned by Crossroad, Crossroads Holding LLC in order to negotiate a potential purchase price of such land for municipal or school purposes by July 31st, 2023. So Tom, would you like to set this one up and then I can?
Yes, I, we've been in discussions, um, really in earnest over the last 60 days, I'll say, but really since the probably late January. Um, and we had hoped to be before uh, the council this evening with uh, a, a formal letter of intent that would have uh, provided far more details in terms of uh, you know, requirements of both sides, buyer and seller and so on, uh, and so forth. Uh, we're still working very diligent, diligently in that direction and intend to have that document in front of you at your next meeting. Uh, because time is really so precious. Uh, we didn't want to lose two weeks. And I can say with confidence that a central point has always been the, the fact that we need an appraisal to support and rationalize a, a purchase price. And so um, to do so, uh, we really need to get started in that process. And so um, I, I sit before you this evening, looking for your authorization to start that process. I have had initial conversations, identified a, a firm and an individual that I think would be perfect for this job. Uh, but as you can expect, uh, we need to see a proposal and, and approve contract language. So this really gets the process started. I would not expect there'll be any work done or costs incurred before a letter of intent is in front of you and under your consideration.
Great. And I think while, what, one of the things we added into the packet that I just want to cover, William, if you could pull it up, is just the general timeline of council actions around the land as well as the school, just to make sure that the public has some visibility. I would say all of these dates are, are draft. They're, they're subject to change, but this is generally the, the timeline we're working through. So as Tom mentioned, tonight, the action is to start the appraisal process. Um, the, the goal is to have a draft letter of intent to the council by the end of this week, so that you have time to review it before our next meeting. At our next meeting, we'll start with an executive session and then go into council action to approve the, the letter of intent. And again, the letter of intent is generally a non-binding agreement. It's going to set out all of the draft terms that Tom um, and the, the team, myself, Councilor Hamel and, and our lawyer have been meeting with the Downs on to talk about potential terms that could go into an actual option agreement. So again, most of this, this information would be non-binding um, from a legal perspective. Uh, but at least allows us to kind of more publicly start to share some of those terms that are out there or that have been discussed. Um, we also have a council board workshop scheduled at our next meeting. Uh, that's going to be revisiting the business case. Um, and then um, that will essentially um, lead to them starting their final cost estimates as well to kind of get to that final cost. Um, a lot of the, the items in the LOI will identify certain things that need to be further refined with the, the property to make sure that we can get those final costs to, to support a referendum decision. So the target, at least today, for the land appraisal to be completed would be about 60 days from the start of the process. And that's, that's typical. It sounds like in this type of field, which is why it's important we start the process early because we need that information to then continue to negotiate the purchase price so that, again, we have that to include um, as part of the referendum request, because whatever bonding we're going to have to do for this land is going to have to be considered in the total cost of the project. So we want to try and make sure we support the school and staying to their timeline. And this is one of those things that we can do to help just keep the, the, the process moving on a timely basis and avoid any risks that are within the council control. Well, we'll likely have our, the land appraisal will be complete. The town will then negotiate all the different items that need to be considered that might be impacted by that appraisal. And then we'll have an executive session likely on July nineteenth to actually look at the option agreement. So this would be the, the true legally binding document that would include things like the purchase price and other things that might need to be considered as part of the broader land purchase. The school board will likely take some sort of action in July around their request to the town council. And then we will then execute that, that land option. The school building committee, you know, what we've asked them to do, and again, this is more of a target date, it could happen sooner, is really finalize their total project cost estimates, including their annual operating budget to make sure that that's an input into our decision for referendum. Additionally, we're requesting that the town finance department and potentially the finance committee really help to ensure we understand the impact to taxpayers as well as the impact to our debt. Make sure that we have that as information going into our decision to, to, to potentially send this to referendum. On August sixteenth, that, that is the last date that I believe the school will be able to come forward if they want something on the ballot. And so that's why that is, that is a, a hard date. That is the date that we need to make that decision by if this goes to referendum officially. And then the ultimate decision makers for all of this is going to be the public, assuming that the council moves this forward to November, if that's the date that the, the committee requests, then, you know, both the new school costs and the land bonding would be going to the voters ultimately to, to approve and decide if, if this is an investment that they would like to make with, within the town. And then following that, following the referendum approval, there, there will likely be elements in the letter of intent that will be out that the council will have to take certain actions to support in order to get to closing. At least, you know, in the more recent conversations, the target closing date, assuming that the referendum passes would be March thirty-first. And again, at that closing, we have something in our, our credit enhancement agreement related to a school site. And so that, that particular item in the CEA would be met. So again, while, while this, there's a lot to happen in the next few months. A lot of it's going to be council action. And again, this is just a draft to kind of outline that. So if there's other actions that the council wants to see from a planning perspective, so that way we can make sure not only are we kind of doing our due diligence, but we're bringing the public along on the different decisions and things that need to be made, given, you know, how important this investment is going to be to, to the community. Please let me know so that we can work through this. So at our next meeting, if there's any specific items we need to add, you know, I'm looking for that input so that, again, this will help us with planning from a council perspective as we go forward. With that being said, again, the, as Tom mentioned, part of the reason why we wanted to start this process is because the time it's going to take to actually get the appraiser aligned on, on the work, get in their queue, because this is a unique type of purchase. We're talking about vacant undeveloped land. And so the time to do the appraisal will take time. Again, trying to keep the school as best we can on the timeline is important, you know, as we've talked about in different workshops, when we've asked the question if for some reason, something shifts a few months, you know, that could lead to millions of dollars in additional project costs that could be avoided. So it's important that we do what we can to try and keep it on, on pace. In addition, you know, any shifts in schedule would, would likely add extra time in terms of when the, the solutions would be available and open. So right now, the school is, is looking to have the project open in the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight school year. And so if you've looked at the enrollment study, the, the projections are showing that that big increase of kids is, are you going to start before then? So any delay will just mean that there'll be a lot of children, you know, crammed in our current schools. So that's just something that we got to think about and what that means in terms of additional costs the school may have to incur with the delay in this project. So again, those are some of the reasons why we felt like it was important to kind of get the ball rolling and just make sure we do that. I will say, as, as Tom mentioned, you know, there has been a lot of conversations with the, the building committee members with the developer to really try and hone in on the specific site. The good news is that I think there's general agreement on the general location, but the specifics are still getting outlined. And the goal is to have that clearly outlined in the LOI so that we know what the specific location is going to be so that we can see that and share it with the public. But right now, that work is still happening, but it should come to a conclusion relatively soon. So with that, are there any questions from the council? No?
Do we know how much the appraisal will cost? And how do you propose paying for it?
I don't have an exact cost yet. Really, we need to better understand the full scope of the, the project. I should also mention, it, it's expected that Crossroads will be conducting their own appraisal as well. So it's important that those two appraisal professionals agree on a common set of assumptions and, and scope of work. So again, to my point earlier, the sooner we get started in that process, the better. So no, I do not have a final cost yet. I'll certainly report that out to you. I intend, and I've reached out to my school colleagues to use previously approved the funds to support the, the planning efforts to, to pay for the cost of this.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I want to make a couple of comments. Number one, I want to thank the town manager and the chair and also the, you know, the good folks, you know, on the school side. We've been talking about, you know, the best way to kind of wade into this, you know, to get going. And there was no good answer for that. So, so I, you know, this was the first chance we've had to lay out the whole process and steps, you know, the, the current plan, the best case. It does not mean the whole plan is being approved tonight. It means we're approving the, you know, the first step in this, which is authorize Tom to get an appraisal. Several people have made the point, which is a good one. It's hard to decide on buying a piece of land if you don't have a price. So, yeah, so that's really where we are. And I, you know, we're, this is all new ground for us. We've never really, I cannot think of anything we've done as a council that has been, you know, where we've been under pressure, we've erred on the side of trying to be transparent and forthcoming and let everybody know where, where we are and maybe more appropriately where we are not. And that includes trying to fashion a statement that would represent what the council feels. So, so I just want to thank everybody for that and the support of my fellow counselors for, you know, getting it out there and you know, see where it takes us.
Great. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Kathy Terrell. I am the principal of Scarborough Middle School. And I am speaking in support of the building project. It is a K eight solution. And each year, when I present my budget to the school board, we talk about our successes and we also talk about our challenges. And I talk about the space at the middle school each year. So our entire sixth grade is in the standalone portable building. This year, that's two hundred and twenty-four students. That's where their core classes are. To go to the nurse's office, to go to, you know, all of their encore classes, they travel into the middle school. They also then, you know, when the weather is poor, they are, you know, moving between buildings, we'll have somebody maybe go to the cafeteria if it's downpouring and open up those doors so the students can walk in. We have multiple teachers on carts. So for one example, a world language teacher will be teaching a class in the main building. And then when that class is over, gather up all their things, gather up their laptop, their materials, walk over to the sixth grade portables. The teacher there is moving out, they're setting up their laptop. So they do lose some instruction time. There's also, we're very tight with any small groups. And oftentimes we do have two different small groups in one space. There might be a divider, but it is hard to not listen to the other group that's going on. We also have limited space to get all of our students together. Wentworth has been great as long as we go before school starts right in the morning, we can go over there and use that space. But when we want to have a guest speaker or something, you know, we really have, it's hard to find a space for that. We also, the cafeteria is very small and it's overcrowded. And it's a very stimulating environment. We've, we found this year that our eighth grade class this year is larger and we did have to split that into two different lunch groups. The students are just yelling just to be heard above everybody else's voice. So our, the school when it was built many years ago, you know, we outgrew it very quickly. I think it was about two or three years later when the portables were put in. But I support the new building solution. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kelly Mullen Martin and I'm the principal of Blue Point School. And I'm also speaking to pledge my complete support for the building proposal. And I come to this issue from multiple perspectives. I attended Pleasant Hill School forty-five years ago, so not to age myself. I graduated from Scarborough Schools. I have worked in all three of our primary schools. And I've been the principal of both Pleasant Hill and Blue Point for a short period, both at the same time. And my retired parents also live in Scarborough, so I have a vested interest in their ability to remain there comfortably. When I went to kindergarten, it was half day. You could go home for lunch. We had Christmas trees in our classrooms in December and we didn't do any lockdown drills. A lot has changed since then. I've worked here for twenty years. Adequate and appropriate space has been an issue since the day I started and it's grown and grown and grown. Tonight, I want to tell you a story. It's a little bit made up, but includes real examples of things that have happened and continue to happen in our schools. It's a snapshot. Mrs. Brown comes into work at seven in the morning on Monday. She is hoping for some uninterrupted prep time. She goes to swipe in at the front door and it takes her three times before the door unlocks because the old door sticks. She carries on down the hallway and encounters a puddle of water. She looks up and sees that the metal box in the ceiling is leaking. She knows that this has happened many times before and has something to do with the heating element. She goes off and searched for the, for the custodian. She finds him on his hands and knees, replacing tiles that have popped up in the hallway while he was buffing the floor. She tells him about the leak. He says he will notify Todd, who was already heading down to fill some sinkholes in the backfield. True story. Mrs. Brown heads off to her classroom. She unlocks her door, turns on the lights and sees little poofs of white fluff on the carpet. She doesn't know if it's soap, mildew, what is it? She knows it's happened to somebody else. She knows it happens when damp, when carpet is on damp cement. She goes off to find the custodian again. Now it's seven fifteen. She's able to finally start prepping for her week, but then the custodian comes in to clean her carpet, which involves a loud machine. She moves to another space. At seven forty, she returns to class prepping again. The time flies by and at eight fifteen, she realizes she needs to make some copies. She rushes up to the office and realizes that several others have the same need. It is the only color copier in the building. She can't wait and be on time for her students, so she leaves it with the secretary and hopes that this is done in time for her activity. Students arrive at eight fifty. They crowd into the cubby area, hanging their bags and stuffing their boots underneath. Sorry, I'm a little over. Mrs. Brown has twenty-one students this year, so one student has to put his items in another location. There are only twenty cubbies. She has to rethink morning meeting because they can't gather on the wet rug. She changes her plan quickly, calls them to their desks and the day is off and running. These are all examples that have happened and continue to happen. You've heard about all the big reasons and there is lots of information for you to digest. These little tiny interruptions, distractions and attractions from education are what are happening every day and take away from teaching and learning in our buildings. Data tells us that half of teachers nationally are experiencing burnout. Our students of all ages are experiencing alarming rates of anxiety, depression and suicidal thoughts. We owe to our educational community to provide appropriate, safe, updated and adequate learning space for all students so they can focus on teaching and learning and nothing else. Thank you.
So I'd like to go online, because we have a couple of hands up online. So I see Ms. Giftis. You have your hand up first. So if you unmute yourself, you should be able to talk. So if you could state your, your name and address for the record and then just as a reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Alicia Giftis to Saratoga Lane. I'm, I'm speaking tonight in support of the building that's necessary for our schools. I'm concerned that there's an organized group whose primary goal is to oppose the building of this necessary consolidated school and that there are misrepresentations of fact being made by that group. I think it's important that we correct the record and not allow this false narrative to perpetuate. Unfortunately, I've heard some council members repeat some of these inaccuracies. Many of these statements have revolved around buzzwords, which I believe are intentionally designed to cause people to speak out against the school. The first of those buzzwords is that we've been rushing the process. That's plainly not true. This work has been ongoing since two thousand and fourteen. That's nine years. In that time, the overcrowding of our schools has gotten worse and it's going to continue to get worse. And we know that. School safety has become an increasingly concerning issue. And all studies, and there have been repeated studies done in this nine-year period, have all determined that a new school is necessary. The second inaccuracy is related to the cost associated with the new school. That cost has increased substantially by delaying for nine years. It will continue to increase, increase with additional delay. This school needs to be built. We know it needs to be built. It will happen at some point and the most cost-effective way for it to occur is to build it now. Number three is that we need to continue to look into keeping our neighborhood schools. Again, that's something that's not true. We all know it's not true and that's playing upon people's emotions. We all have an affinity to our neighborhood schools, but this isn't a time for our personal preference. It's cost prohibitive. There's no room on the sites. Those sites are unsafe. To, to renovate those schools would be disruptive to learning and a logistical nightmare. So we know that that's not an option. Another buzzword is location. I think that that's something that's being played upon to, because it's easy to cause hysteria. People are jumping on the anti-Downs bad bandwagon. If, if, if you have been paying any attention at all to the process, every potential site has been looked at, investigated and ruled out. This is the only possible location. It's been, it's well reasoned and it's been explained, explained clearly. Finally, that there's been no ability for public involvement. The public, that's not true. The public has been asked to participate at every stage. And in fact, at this time today, if you go on the school board's website to the buil- building project, you'll find a button on that page that outlines the way in which the public can be involved today. I would invite those individuals who are speaking out in opposition to try to become involved in the project rather than spending their efforts to fight against it. In summary, this is a need for our community. The safety of our schools is compromised. The schools are overcrowded. They're inefficient and expensive to operate. They clearly need to be replaced. The longer we wait, the worse the crowding will be. The more we compromise the safety of our children and the more this inevitable project will cost.
Great. Thank you. And going back to the room?
Hello, thank you. My name's Amy Taylor and I live at thirteen Jasper Street. And I'm also a second grade teacher at Blue Point School and a looping teacher. So I teach first also sometimes. And I'm really nervous to talk in front of people, so I'm glad I'm getting this done. I just, I'm not here to speak on just my behalf. I'm also speaking for some other staff members that have sent. I just, I'm not here to speak on just my behalf. I'm also speaking for some other staff members that have sent some comments to me as well to share. But they couldn't attend tonight. First, I want to let you know that when it comes to the new building project, I personally have been a hard sell. Spending a lot of money on a new skill buil- school building is not something that I take lightly, nor is it something that I was on board for at first. I'm kind of attached to Blue Point School. I was a student there, beginning in nineteen seventy-five, all the way through third grade at the time. Both of my children attended that school. And it is truly an honor to be teaching in the same exact classroom that I was there for second grade and now I'm teaching my students in that same room. Having smaller community schools is comfortable. I understand it and I wholeheartedly believe that it's true. I also believe that there is charm and comfort in small towns. But Scarborough is no longer a small town. We are a much larger town and small buildings that are old aren't working for us anymore. It's simply going to be too expensive to fix. Here is a following, ah, here's a list of the things that other teachers have said. It's kind of a bulleted list. That we all kind of made this list together. One, a new school building would provide us with a safer building and a safer playground. It would eliminate travel for teachers who work in three schools. It would eliminate the need for sharing spaces. For example, our cafeteria is also our gym. Our music room is also our art room. Fingers crossed, it will provide better temperature control. I'm always cold. It would provide space to have meetings. It would provide more space for learning. It would allow a common planning across grade levels in the entire district. It would allow for more equitable resources for all grade levels. It would allow for broader collaboration among staff for planning. It would allow for a central location that is closer to the other resources in our community. And it would alleviate overcrowding in grades K through eight. After meeting with the architects, we have shared, who have shared, we, excuse me, sorry, the teachers have shared how important that small school feel is to us. I believe that they're listening to us. I think they're going to consider our passionate requests when they design the school. I trust that the engineers, architects, board of education and building leaders have done their due diligence to find the best solution for our children and for our community. Thank you.
All right, going back online. Mr. Fortier, if you unmute your phone?
Good evening and thank you, counselors and everyone in attendance tonight. My name is Dana Fortier. And I'm a resident of Scarborough and I'm also the chair of the building committee. I've served on the committee for several years now. And would like to thank all those who have provided their time, effort and dedication to this very, very important and urgent town need. We all have a common duty to provide educational facilities that meet the very basic needs of our students, educators and community. And as I've mentioned many times before, some of our schools were constructed in nineteen fifty. When at that time, the population of Scarborough was approximately five thousand people. Today, the twenty, the population, or at least those of twenty twenty, the population was in Scarborough was over twenty-two thousand and rapidly growing. I in the building committee welcome all constructive and solution-based dialogue with the community and will continue to answer questions submitted to the via writing or in public meetings. In highly encouraged participation, we are really, really looking for folks to engage with us. Provide us your comments. And again, is to, to try and work towards the common goal of, of solving this, this, this challenge. Next week, and I'd like to call this out as something that's another opportunity to engage. We will be hosting a series of tours at the, at the schools for the public. This is an opportunity, this is an opportunity to engage with the building committee, the school leadership, teachers, staff. Perhaps members of the council. And again, I can encourage folks enough to, to come out, see the challenges firsthand. But also to see what good can look like. We will have a tour, I believe, at the Wentworth School. And it's a pretty stark, stark comparison between, you know, what's, you know, sixty years ago versus seventy years ago, what versus what we're doing today. So as always, I encourage everyone to visit the Scarborough School's website. Click the building project link in the top right-hand corner for information. We've updated the frequently asked questions there recently and continue to do that as we get more information. And I, again, just thank the, the community and the staff for supporting the project and in, in this urgent need for the town. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Just a reminder for the public and those offering public comment where we're currently talking about the appraisal process. So if you have questions specific, or comments specific to the appraisal and, and feedback on that, if you could please keep your comments as aligned to those as you can, that would be appreciated. And again, you have three minutes. If you could state your name and address.
My comments will be short. Christopher Brownsey, Fraser Acres Lane in Scarborough. So I'm in here in support of the school project overall to address the needs in the town and school population growth or the, and this the facility needs and school population growth. The school project is needed to address the aging facilities, the portable classrooms, which I think others have spoken to. So keep it short. And the very longstanding, since even before I moved to Scarborough in the nineties, middle school space issue. I think it was actually undersized before it opened, but that's another story. Today's action is really just part of the ongoing processes you outlined of the school project. And of course, the important work needs to continue by, you know, the council, the school board, the school staff, the building committee and other professionals really to make the case for the project and support the cost, because, you know, ultimately the voters will decide. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to go online next to Mr. Gates. And again, just as a reminder, the, the action right now that the council is considering is the land appraisal.
Hi, can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks so much and yes, I, I appreciate the focus of the order you're, you're discussing and allowing us to comment on. And my comment is directly in relationship to that. Although I must say I it's very good to hear the principals and the teachers speak. It's moving and appreciate that. Regarding the, the land. My comment is basically, and I was, I was, I listened to the building committee recommendations for the land and the four finalists and then their recommendation of the Crossroads Holdings property. And my comment is in relationship to when you go out to seek the best price you can for something as significant as, as you're discussing. I'm, I'm not a real estate broker. But it's always good, it seems as though this proposal is putting all its eggs in one basket. So I happen to be somewhat familiar with the Two Rod Road property, which was one of the four finalists from my participation on the long range planning committee. Otherwise, I really wouldn't know. I'm wondering whether the council has considered, maybe I missed something. The idea of having more than one property for which you seek an appraisal. And for which you have negotiations over price, availability, that sort of thing. I realize out of respect to the building committee and Chair Forty A's work over all these years. His recommendation and his committee's recommendation carries a lot of weight. I think I've made my point. I'd like to see this order expanded to a land appraisal. The Crossroads with Crossroads Ro- Holdings, absolutely. But to include one or even more, I think it would strengthen your bargaining position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going back to the room. And again, if you could please keep your comments to the topic on the agenda, which is around negotiating the purchase or moving forward a land, land appraisal.
Yep. Hi, my name's Dave Martin from Six Overlook Drive. And in my comments, I feel, I mean, the whole discussion, I feel I'd got to point out is directly related, the comments you're all hearing are directly related to the moving ahead with the appraisal because of the important thing that Tom mentioned, that that is the first step. We're pointing out all the reasons that we need to take this first step. So that said, I've been a member of the school building steering committee since two thousand and nineteen. I'm a former, former member of SEDCO. I'm also here as a licensed structural engineer who designs and evaluates buildings, including schools, many schools. So I completely understand the emotional attachment to the, to the existing three primary schools and the desire to, of many to try to keep them. So I want to discuss that issue from the structural point of view. I don't feel like that's really been hit very hard yet. Dating back to even prior to when I joined the steering committee four years ago, studies have been done and revisited to see how this could be done. The unfortunate fact is that it's just not logistically or economically feasible to do so. The building code, or sorry, any project which alters an existing building needs to comply with the building code. I'll leave it to others here to talk about financial and energy impacts, but I'll focus on the structure. It's been shown that there's simply not enough room at any of these school sites to expand as a single-story building. A vertical expansion of adding a second story would therefore be needed. Here's where the building code comes in. The existing buildings and foundations were designed for a single story and were designed and constructed prior to the code requirement for the design for seismic loads. The existing buildings have unreinforced masonry wall partitions that not only limit the size of classrooms to less than state standards, but they're also insufficient to support an additional building story. So the code essentially would require that all the existing load-bearing walls and foundations be strengthened or replaced in order to meet the code. In other words, each school would need to be essentially demolished and replaced with new structure in order to add a second story. So where do all the kids go while this is happening? If the construction was phased and kids were bused to already overcrowded schools, this only extends the timeline and increased the cost. It's simply not feasible to build additions to the existing schools while they're occupied. And this is not even to mention the overcrowding relief that a K through three unified school would provide for the middle school by facilitating the move of sixth grade to Wentworth. The bottom line is that extending timelines and, or waiting to build the much-needed new school will only hurt our taxpayers' wallets. It's going, the construction costs from prior to COVID to now have almost doubled. And it's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anybody else online, so if you could go ahead and state your name for the record. And again, if you could try to keep your comments related to the, the order item around the, the land appraisal, please.
Jillian Trupini Huff, three fifteen Beechridge Road, and I've never been able to stay on topic, so I'm just kidding, but this week, or well, in the last week, the school building committee and the school board voted separately and approved the site at Scarborough Downs Development Community for the new unified K to three school. This decision marks an important milestone in the development of the district-wide strategic school solution. And it is one which has brought the community members, educational experts and leaders and the Scarborough elected representatives together to build a future for Scarborough students. Finding the right location to build a school, especially one that will play such a crucial role for our community for decades to come is no small task. Which is why Scarborough Public Schools was so intentional about building a process which pulled in insight and perspectives from across the community and combined it with that, that subject matter experts and local leaders. We want the community to feel confident in the integrity, transparency and thoughtfulness of the process from start to finish. This meant an open building committee meetings and a series of public visioning workshops and community forums. Some major components of all these meetings included the understanding of major stakeholder priorities, including collecting information about all of the components of a new school and sharing the process for site selection. Each potential site was evaluated, evaluated based on eleven selection criteria. A site needed to meet all of these critical elements of each category to be considered. During our summer community workshop, we had community members rank all of these criti- criteria in order of importance and use that prioritization in our site evaluation. After reviewing all of the requirements for a potential site, we invited workshop participants to vote on their preferred location in reference to the map of Scarborough. Seventy-three percent voted to place a school around the location voted by the building committee and school board this, in the past week. The Scarborough Downs. This location was chosen because it met all of the criteria and aligned with the priorities consistently named in Scarborough community. The school will be built to serve the needs of Scarborough today and the growth of Scarborough of tomorrow. It is just a district-wide solution and will support Scarborough students and families with equitable educational excellence. Protect our natural resources and lower operational costs through sustainable development and energy-efficient operations and build a future of our community by empowering our youngest members. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if you could please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. And if you could please try and keep your comments on the, the item on the table, which is the land appraisal.
I'd be too. My name's Freya Latarpinian. I live at seventeen Bonnie Grove Drive. And I am speaking in support of the act to authorize the town manager to conduct a land appraisal because it is what is required to take the next step to purchase land to build the new building. There's a ton of great information coming out right now with the reasons that we need this new school and the process that we've been working through to find the right solution for Scarborough families and their students today, as well as the future of our growing community. And while we understand that all of those things are crucial, we want to take a moment to clearly outline what that looks like in action. How will our district look once the new unified school, uh, school is built? So let me take a moment to review that today. The new site, which Jillian just discussed, will serve as the educational home for our K through three students and operate with a school within a school model. Much like Wentworth is successfully doing right now. It will provide small learning communities within the overall school, equitable services and increased program time for all K through three students. Grade three will move to Wentworth to the new, eh, grade three will move from Wentworth to the new unified school and grade six will move from the middle school to Wentworth. This allows us to eliminate overcrowding at all of our schools, middle school, Wentworth and our K through three schools. As you know, it's been mentioned, the sixth grade class is entirely currently in portables right now, as is my daughter at Eight Corners. And this will address all the needs of the students at all of these schools. For example, my, my children can't even attend the same school because of the way the services are provided. So I will be trying to coordinate pickup at two different elementary schools next year at the same time. This is a district-wide educational win for our students, not just for my family, but for all of our families. And it's required for educational excellence, student experience and the operational cost and efficiency as we're discussing the budget today as well. Students will have dedicated spaces for special programming and learning opportunities. Our current K through two students have reduced program time and limited program offerings compared to similar districts due to shared or missing spaces. That means lunch is shortened because gym class has to start and gym class is shortened because lunch has to be done. And our children are eating at all times of the day, starting very early in the morning and going way late in the afternoon for five, six and seven-year-olds. At our, and our operational class will decrease to the energy efficiency building that uses the latest building standards and technology. A great example of this fact is our K through two schools currently cost fifty percent more per square foot to operate than Wentworth, which is fully air-conditioned. Safety concerns will also be addressed by removing the portables. If you think about what it means when students are moving between portables outside into a school building and you think about school safety, just imagine what that actually means. There's no drills that you can do to protect students who are wandering around outside. Our current K through students have, at our, we have the opportunity right now to future-proof our schools for families who call Scarborough home and ensure that this solution will accommodate the growth of the changing community while ensuring the educational excellence that Scarborough has prided itself for years. And so I urge you to improve the ability for the town manager to And so I urge you to improve the ability for the town manager to conduct the appraisal and purchase the land.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Jenna Lee Young and I live at forty-seven Woodspill Road. Um I want to share with you the importance of an environment for a young learner. An American psychologist by the name of Abraham Maslow developed what we know as Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You may have seen this represented as a triangle um or a pyramid and it's an easy way to visualize how students are motivated to learn. The idea is that each level needs to be fulfilled before moving to the next. So in this pyramid, the most, the most basic needs, physiological and safety needs like food, water, rest, warmth, shelter, et cetera. Are at the bottom of this pyramid, serving as a foundation for everything else. These needs must be met before a child can reach the highest point of the pyramid. In between the foundation and the top come the need for love and belongingness, working up to self-esteem and then self-actualization. This is where a child can finally get to a point of being available to learn, be creative and grow developmentally. How does this apply to a school? The school where a child spends the majority of their waking hours provides basic needs, shelter, opportunities to socialize and have a sense of belonging. Moments of self-reflection and a space for exploring their curiosities and learning. So we'll start with basic needs. Currently, our youngest students are in temporary classrooms that were built too long ago. Simple things like feeling warm in those areas are difficult to meet with the conditions these portables are in. Meal times, opportunities for a child to refuel are rushed because it's a shared space for other programming like physical education and assemblies. Children often report feeling like they didn't have time to finish their meals. Our youngest learners are in facilities, facilities that lack security. There are a lot of threats to our children we cannot control. Which is why it is absolutely unacceptable and irresponsible to not address the security vulnerabilities we have. Moving on to social needs, these are met in many ways through school. Let's look at meal times and play as examples. Where our kids eat is overcrowded, loud and overstimulating. As I mentioned, they're being rushed during meals to accommodate other program we need for our kids. This results in them being unable to speak to one another in order to get food in them. Outdoor spaces for play, including green spaces, have been taken over by portables and the equipment they do have is often falling apart. Jumping to the top tiers of our pyramid where they're finally able to learn and grow. Children need to move, step into areas that excite them, motivate them. Our staff do a phenomenal job maximizing our students' academic growth with what we have. However, we're asking them to provide optimal results, but forcing them to operate in an environment that is not only suboptimal. It is contradictory to supporting growth, learning and development. They enter bathrooms, that's also storage. Teachers load up things on carts and go classroom to classroom to provide education because we don't have the space to allow for additional classrooms. Students have reduced program time and limited program offerings and limited space means a twenty-five percent reduction in specialist time. As a community, we have a responsibility to support these needs for every child who comes through our school system. But unfortunately, despite the tireless work of our teachers and school administrators to provide the very best for our students. Based on the resources we have, we are currently not fulfilling that responsibility for Scarborough's youngest citizens. The building steering committee has, has put together a strategic, thoughtful, district-wide solution to address the limitations of our current K to eight schools. The plan in place addresses all the needs we are required to fulfill on this hierarchy of needs. Present and future.
If you could please keep your comments to the land appraisal.
I will do just that. As it was mentioned before me, this land appraisal is a very exciting time because it is the first step where you get the opportunity to. To join us. Um so when I think about that and what I think about the, what this means and I think about our new school, there is a lot that really excites me here. Um you've heard over and over tonight about the existing struggles between, with our community members, with our staff and our employees and the district. Um some have very nicely laid out what this looks like in action and how in, in real life, what this will do to help us to provide our students with the educational. Excellence that they deserve. But really, when you look at this in your role tonight and what this is starting, this is a really, really good opportunity for us to be able to look back later and say, look how we collaborated. Not just the seven of us school, school board members, but the fourteen of us all together and our community members and our staff and our teachers. People that are really, really excited for this. This is going to be a case study for years to come about how we can come together and how we can. Create something that is the benefit of not just a few of us, but all of us. So I really thank you. I do want to take a moment and thank you all here, the, all the councilors. For your support of this, of us as a school board with this project, with your questions, your feedback, your advice, your tough objections even. We appreciate all of that. We have a very robust FAQ that we, we jokingly laugh about together that's. Eighty-plus questions long that you ask. These are really, really valuable pieces of information for the community and for us and we appreciate it. So when you're thinking about tonight, I really hope you um really will say yes and vote yes to give Tom this authority to start the process and allow our project to move forward. Because this is not a nice to have, this is a must-have right now. I cannot be any clearer. This is not a nice to have. This is a must-have and this is the first step to get that process started. You've seen the enrollment numbers, you know what's coming. This school aligns perfectly with that big bump. And this is when we have to move, we have to act. We are already over exceeded our capacity. Our program inefficiencies have been discussed already tonight and you know you have the enrollment study that gives you the hard data you need to say yes tonight. So please consider all of these and all of the data, consider all of our needs when you're making this decision. We um look forward to, as a school board, as our staff, as our employees, we look forward to continuing to work on this together. So that we can really create this school that's for the Scarborough, uh our students now in Scarborough and the ones that we know are coming. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment on this item? Right, just as a reminder for the public and those watching, the, the order itself is an act to authorize the town manager to conduct a land appraisal. For up to twenty-five acres of land owned by Crossroads Holdings LLC in order to negotiate a potential purchase price. Of such land for municipal or school purposes by July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So what the council is, is gonna vote on is to start the appraisal process. This is not. A vote in support of the school solution or anything of that nature. This is really just. Voting to move forward with an appraisal process for land. So I just want to. Make that clear um for the public and for the council that that is specifically what we're here to, to vote on tonight. Um so with that, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh councillor Seiter?
So I'll start off by saying thank you to you, John, for developing the timeline that you posted. Um I found that to be incredibly helpful just as a councillor and as a member of the building steering committee. With so many upcoming dates, meetings and moving pieces, I think it's really good to be aligned on a calendar. Even if that calendar is subject to change, um I think it's really good for us to have some kind of. Um even just draft outline of the process that we need to. Um participate in as a council between now and November. Um I want to say thank you to the people who um made public comment tonight. I know that sometimes. Um as councilors, we wish that people would stick to the agenda maybe a little more closely, but. I, I will say, for me personally, nobody made, nobody made use of the general public comment and so for me. Uh it was my time at, in this portion of the meeting versus our time at the beginning of the meeting and I welcome all public comments. So thank you for everybody who made their public comment. As to the order, this is the first step in this process. I think that this aligns with our council goal to um facilitate the school project and be partners in this process. They cannot move the school building project farther along without an appraisal on a piece of property and that's what we're authorizing Tom to do. So I fully support this and I appreciate all the work that went into getting us this far.
I did, yeah. Not as good as that. So I, great public comments. I actually, uh thank you all for coming and for sharing your perspectives. It was very helpful. Um I have a boring, so for me, I, I'd like to add a funding source to the order. Uh the, and I'd like to make, for it to be the school department capital reserve account, which I think is what you're planning. But I just wanted to throw that out there because I don't want to spend two billion dollars on a, an appraisal. Not that Tom would do that, but I thought we should try to.
So would you like to? Let's continue comment and decide if we want to amend the order. Councillor Caterina?
Yeah, um. I mean, I'll be the first one to say the teacher in me was sitting here going, guys, stick to the point. So I will admit that I'm, I'm the one who was like, yeah. Uh but you had some great comments uh to make and I would suggest that. Those of you who did make comments tonight, make sure you write letters to the editor. That you get up and speak, you know, when we're speaking, you know, as we move along in future with this and, and make yourself known at. Meetings that do talk about the school building uh and the possibility for, for the building. She all had very good points. Um it was just getting a little off from where we were um. Trying to get to, which is whether we're gonna order an appraisal or not. Um I was a little concerned, one of the folks who commented, mentioned, why aren't we doing more than one appraisal and. I don't know, I, I guess I have a hard time understanding, why would you negotiate? Two contracts at the same time. Um because what if they both get accepted? Then what are you gonna do? Um so, um I, I just. I, I guess I understand why that. Person asked that, but I just wanted to make sure that. It's understood that this is not an unusual move to make in real estate, particularly in commercial real estate. Where you, you're doing a due diligence upfront uh to find out, you know. What's the value of this land? What are we getting into? Um I can't imagine the appraisal will cost all that much money. Of course, what I think's not much money, another person might go, what? Um so I agree that, you know, to amend it. As to where we'll get the funding for the appraisal makes sense. Um but I definitely support uh moving this forward because it is, it's gonna take a couple of months to get an appraisal back and we don't have. We can't be dilly-dallying, as my mother would say, who's a first-grade teacher. So, thank you.
Councillor Hamel, did you have your hand up?
I was just, I was just gonna say, uh, you know, uh, you know, I support the first step, you know, it's a, it's a long way to go in a short period of time. So I think we need to be realistic about expectations. Uh I know there's a lot of pent-up demand to just get going. And um so I look forward to learning more and seeing how this goes and, and I will say it's, you know, it's. As we proceed, if we proceed, um is it safe to say that um? That this is not uncomplicated. Okay, this is a, you know. A very complicated deal if it all unfolds as planned. You saw some twenty steps, twenty steps or so. You know, about evenly divided between the school and the town. So um, you know, let's see, I'm willing to move ahead on the first step as outlined. And I agree with councillor Gucci's suggestion that uh. Yeah, before we sit down to dinner and let's figure out who's gonna pick up the tab. Sorry, I use a lot of food analogies, like.
Did you, councillor McGee, did you have your hand up?
No, but I would also chime. I will chime in that I do support uh councillor Kalushy's suggestion that maybe we designate where, where the funds will come from on this. Thanks.
Alright, so is there anybody who would like to offer up a motion?
Yeah, I, I just uh moved to amend the main motion to add uh. The school department uh capital reserve account as a funding source for the appraisal.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, it's unanimous. So now back to the main motion as amended on the floor. Any more discussion? Councillor Seiter?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and, and maybe ask a question that is an attempt to debunk. A narrative that I'm hearing, um and I hope that I don't overcomplicate this conversation by bringing this up right now and Tom's making a concerned face, so here we go. So in, it's my understanding and I'm not, and obviously we're speaking in very generic terms. Um it's my understanding that, that the goal of this is for the, us to get an appraisal and. The property owner is also getting their own appraisal. And so when we're talking about negotiating and having given up our leverage or that the Downs now is aware that we're pursuing their property. And that somehow that puts us at a disadvantage. Ultimately, this is gonna come down to their appraisal and our appraisal and, and. Settling on a number that is agreed upon by. Both bodies, strictly speaking to that appraisal. And so the, this kind of this idea that we've, we've lost our, our bar, our bargaining chips or that. You know, now the Downs knows all of our eggs are in their basket. I think it's kind of a false narrative that I'm hearing a little bit and so I just want to make sure that people understand like. We're getting our, our appraisal and they're getting theirs and we're gonna find a way to make those two numbers work in our benefit. You know, or at least bring something forward in good faith that we can discuss as a council. True?
True.
True, okay.
I think I, I, I will add that I think as, as we've talked about this process, like as a, as a town. You know, we're, we're unique in that, you know, it's not our money, it's the, the citizens' money. And so that's very different. When probably commercial entities are purchasing. Property because they speak to a board of directors who can approve things without having mass approval. And so I think. Tom has, has, in my opinion, done the right thing by saying. We need an appraisal so that we know what to negotiate so that we're not, you know. Having to pay something that we feel like is more than as a, as a government that we could authorize. And so it really is to try and make sure that we're. Taking um, you know, our role as a government with the residents in mind to make sure that we're. Using that as our basis for conversation because if it, if we get to the point where. The appraisals come back and we can't find a, an agreed-upon price, like I think we've kind of said. That's probably a walk-away point for the town for this particular property, which would then lead to us having to look at other options and. You know, I wouldn't say there aren't other options. I think I heard the public, some, some comments in the public that. There aren't other options. This is, you know, according to the committee and the board, the best option and all that analysis and data is out there. Um but if for some reason we have to go to a different option, as was mentioned, Two Rod Road is still out there, the Grandin site that was covered. Um so those are, those are options that again, if, if in the event things don't work out, you know, we'll have to, to. Consider those and pivot, so. Um this is just the, 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 the place that was recommended and to, to meet our goals as, as we wrote together this year to support the project. And to procure land for the town. This lines up with that and so this action itself is really just. To try and move those, those items forward that we committed to this year when we set our council goals. Alright, any other discussion on this topic? No? Alright, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor? Alright, it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to, yes.
I have to get.
Yes, let's. Let's take a quick ten-minute break. Does that work? All right, next up is order number twenty-three dash zero four four. First reading and waive the second reading to repeal and replace the ninety-day emergency moratorium that the town council approved on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And enact a new ninety-day emergency moratorium that would apply to the Pine Point industrial overlay district specifically to adult marijuana cultivation facilities and medical marijuana cultivation facilities. And this is being brought forward by Assistant Town Manager, Saleem, do you wanna set the stage?
So just as a, a way of background, uh, the council passed a town-wide moratorium on February fifteenth that applied to um, all new marijuana establishments in the town of Scarborough, as well as any prohibited, any expansion of existing licensed establishments. Um, that moratorium was due to expire on May sixteenth, so the, the day before your next meeting, so he felt compelled to repeal and replace that as we haven't had an opportunity to bring forward any changes to the ordinance that would address those underlying issues and concerns. Um, so what we're proposing, what this proposes to do is to further target that moratorium. Um, we uh, we don't have any um, applications outside um that we're aware of that are gonna come forward or, or in hand. Um, but that, that was the feedback we got um from um the general cannabis community and, and residents about um you know, just the fact that, that the issues here and the concerns here appear to be isolated in the Pine Point overlay and generally associated with cultivation. So this is intended to target that, that specific problem area. But that's, um, that's the proposal in front of you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Liam? Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this? Great. If you could please come up to the podium and you have three minutes, if you'd list your, or simply say your name and address.
Sure. Uh, Dave Rabado, ten Bickford Street in Scarborough. It's unfortunate, it'd be great to have a room full of teachers. Uh, good evening. Um, regarding order number twenty-three oh forty-four, I appreciate the effort to enact a new ninety-day moratorium for cannabis cultivation operations within the Pine Point Industrial Overlay District. Um, it's clear that the working group needs additional time to collaborate and then ultimately conclude their recommendations to the council. Because the working group has yet to address several issues that are of the utmost importance to the residential neighborhoods within Pine Point, including activities at fifteen Holly Street. Uh, my ask of you tonight is that you amend this new moratorium order to include all cannabis operations as was previously done with previous moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brianna Floyd and I reside at six Holly Street in Pine Point and I am a direct-to-butter-to-snow canning. I am also a member of the working group that's been going on. Um, I do support Dave and I do request the amendment. We need more time. Um, the working group has had a lot of discussions, but we really haven't gotten very far. Um, I will say there's continued frustration right now. We only have three neighbors that are allowed to be part of the working group. We do have another member of our community, John Burke, who's an attorney, and it's been made clear that he was not representing the town. And he's on the working group. And earlier today, we received documents with legal jargon from him, and it seems that he's going to be the one writing up the proposals. So I do request that maybe we could have someone more non-biased in this situation, maybe review those forms and be part of this legal process if there is one for the odor mitigation. I think that would be much more fair to the community and the town. Um, and again, I just think that, you know, this is needed, that we need to extend this, but we're still continuing to deal with the odor. And this is also just delaying the problem that we have in our neighborhood. I have four young children. Um, we only have a few houses on our street, but we've been dealing with this for three years now. So it's, it's getting frustrating. We appreciate the efforts, but we'd appreciate a little bit faster speed if we could move forward with things instead of having to keep extending things. You know, fines need to be issued. We need to get on top of this instead of extending slow warnings, slow warrants. If the owner has to be the one responsible to take the fines, I think the town needs to come down a little bit more harder. And we just ask if you review that. So, thank you.
You. All right, is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment?
Good evening, Darlene Smith, ten Bickford Street. I too am on the working group with Brianna and Bree. Um, our group's primary focus, and I want the council to be aware of this, that our primary focus has been on odor mitigation. We've been working on this uh snows canning, you know, and trying to work with the owner there to try to suggest some um, some ways that might mitigate the odor so that we can all live together peacefully. We have not uh really discussed anything to do with um land use changes, uh, anything pertaining to zoning, anything pertaining to ordinance or setbacks, like we discussed way back in January. We were told early on in the working group that that was something that the ordinance committee or council would be working on. So um, you know, that's something that we're not working on. We're working on odor mitigation, you know, only. Um, now, speaking as a, as a resident, I would just like to remind the council that back in January that um myself, my husband, Bree and Brianna and many of our neighbors on Holly Street and Bickford Street came either in person and spoke or we spoke, um, people wrote letters to the council, emails to the council, or spoke online via Zoom about their distress and um adamantly not wanting any marijuana on Holly Street, where it's a very small residential um area. It's a small dead-end street. It is not really an industrial zone. It's a small little business park, nine to five. Um, with that, the moratorium came through. Previously, we do have somebody there. Um, we would just, I, we would just like to remind the council that at that night, many of you looked at us and said, we need to fix this. So um, and I wanted to let you know that we're not working on that. So we would truly appreciate um, a very small amendment. We, we appreciate the fact that it's a Pine Point overlay. We know that we're the only area in town, apparently, that is having issues. If it could include all licenses and not just cultivation, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a few hands online, so I'm gonna start with Eric. Eric, if you could state your first and last name for the record and your address.
Thanks so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Excellent, thanks. I appreciate the time. Eric Floyd. I live at six Holly Street. Uh, Brandon's my wife. I, I just wanted to kinda give some time there. So, you know, Brandon, Brandon and I grew up here. Um, we went to schooling through the Scarborough system. And we love it here. In fact, it's a, it's a privilege to live here. We care deeply about the town and it has a lot to offer. That's why we're raising four kids here now. And we moved here to six Holly Street in November of twenty thirteen. And I'm gonna give some timelines just to, for perspective. I mean, our, our town, our, our residences and our neighborhood there, my wife and, and, and others that you've heard before you today, this isn't something we talked about back in two thousand thirteen because it wasn't a problem. Um, the marijuana establishment licensing ordinance, so, you know, with, referring to chapter ten eighteen, that was adopted in January of twenty twenty. So, you know, seven years after Brandon and I moved into six Holly Street, it became effective thirty days later. We've had issues around that time. So there's a change, you know, we're not here. I'm not speaking before you tonight for fun. This isn't something I even want to talk about. I think it's, I think it's crazy that I'm talking about this three years after it's been brought up. And I'm extremely disappointed that we're not following our own rules. You know, we got, you heard Brianna say tonight, we got a legal document from an attorney to review twenty-four hours before our work group tomorrow. I'm not an attorney. I'm not comfortable with it. I don't agree with it. And frankly, half the stuff written in there is already in your own town ordinance. The problem is we're not enforcing anything. Nothing. It's already in there. The smell is not supposed to leave their boundaries. Section ten, number eleven. Section eleven violations and penalties, a hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. Every single day. It's already in there. No one is enforcing anything. And we've gone through this. The town paid, town tax dollars. We paid the Baucher Associates back in March of twenty-one. They're telling us everything that's in here. Charcoal filters, a hundred percent recommended is the best. Everything's in there. It's not being followed. Not all of them have the charcoal filters. They have manufacturers changing them out. We heard in our work groups, they've never even changed filters in some cases for years. So I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel and go through this legal jargon that you heard Brianna talk about. It's already in our ordinances today. I don't think it's too much to ask to walk out in my backyard and not smell pot. All right, maybe some people like the smell of a skunk, but I don't. And I shouldn't have to. So I, I, I appreciate it, but I'm, I'm just asking for action and you know, we, you know, the last thing I'll add is we were asked back in two thousand twenty to participate with an app to walk outside, log in and, you know, put in when we want to, what we smell. And not all of it was marijuana. Um, but we put it in there only to be told years later, nothing was ever done with it. And when we brought it up to our working group, all that was said was, well, it's only a couple of houses, you know, not a big enough. Um, you know, not enough people. That's the problem. There's three houses that are a hundred feet from ten, or excuse me, from twenty snow canning. So again, I appreciate the time. I think the the frustrating part is we're still talking about this and nothing's been done. Hopefully it changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Libby. So if you unmute your phone, you should be able to speak. It looks like you're still muted if you're trying to speak. Oh, I saw almost unmute. All right, well, Ms. Libby, if, if you can unmute yourself, you can always, but nope. You can send an email to the council, um, if you would like to do that as well. And we can add that into the public record um for this meeting if, if for some reason you can't unmute. Okay. Okay. All right. With that, can I get a motion?
Second?
Any discussion?
I'll just, as part of the working group, um, I just want to confirm um what you heard from um, other members of the public and the working group is that our primary focus, I would completely agree, has been on odor mitigation. Um, as it relates to cultivation, um, we have not discussed the Holly Street property, really. Um, and so fault or not, whatever, whatever we believed our charge was as a committee, um, I, I would certainly agree that the um Holly Street property has been put on the back burner. And I admittedly had, had forgotten how many people spoke the night that we discussed the Holly Street property. Um, and so for that, like, I, I think we would be remiss to, to not um at least talk about an amendment, um, which would include the Holly Street property.
Counselor Katerina?
Yes, the primary uh town council or town council liaison to this committee, um, I I, I apologize if people took it that Mr. Burke's drafts had been ordered in some way by us in, in the committee. I don't remember us ordering from Mr. Burke. He provided something. So this is for discussion. So just so folks will know that we're not saying, oh yeah, this is what you should do. Um, and I think the focus became on the odor because that right now is the major issue. So just, just to let you know. Um, not to say that we shouldn't be looking at what that zoning, whatever is there too. But that was the interest of the group, so.
Counselor McGee?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend um to uh include all marijuana and cannabis activity within the Pine Point, Pine Point Overlay District.
All right, can I get a second?
Second?
Any discussion? Counselor Hamel?
Thank you. I've uh, primarily at uh my fellow Counselor Katerina's request, it was really an instruction. Uh, I studiously avoided getting involved in this at all. I've stayed away from the, the deliberations of the committee, so, uh, but I have been following it very closely, I assure you. Saying that this is not a, you know, that, that the primary focus has been on odor and we really, you know, haven't gotten into um, you know, talking about the folks in Holly Street. I just, well, it's, it's time to do that. Um, you know, talking about the folks in Holly Street. I just, well, it's, it's time to do that. Well, ninety days has passed and us, the half of the group felt and is telling us right now, and we've got other letters that are. There are emails that are coming in and saying the same thing, that we need to refocus on this. So I support. Counselor McGee's motion to, uh, you know, to extend the moratorium. Um, however, to have it, you know, just to extend this with the same scope that it had previously and not reduce that scope. And I will tell you that if this is not success, and you know, we've got a lot of things going on in the next ninety days. And, uh, we've been inside a lot because the weather's been cold and wet and rainy. So the last thing I want to be doing every day is dealing with my, my fellow residents in Pine Point, talking about the long hot summer of. You know, uh, of Pine Point being known for, you know, uh, instead of fresh ocean sea breezes, the smell of ganja. So I'm, 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 we really need to go back at this hard. And if it's not successful in the next cycle, we'll go at it directly. Through the ordinance route. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Counselor Katerina?
Yeah, um, I absolutely support, uh, this amendment to this because I. Think that we do need to really dig in what's going on. So, and, um, I. Fully hope and plan that we'll get something off the table and to the council for action. You know, talk is great to a point, but you gotta take action, so.
Any other discussion items? Counselor McGee?
I clearly support the amendment. I, I do think, um, the nature of this, the amount of effort that's being put in and to know that. There are still topics that need some broaching on, from the working group. And then again, through ordinance, we do need this time and I, I want to get it right. Not, I don't want to have to rehash this again in front of this council or any other council. I think we deserve it to our residents and ourselves to get this right and we need more time. And I think this is a way to do it and also provide some extra. Added protections for the residents out there while we work through this.
I, you know, the only, the only thing I would want to add, well, for this, this particular amendment, I support it. Um, Counselor Hamlin, you made a, a comment about doing the same thing as the last one in terms of scope. And so I just want to clarify that the scope is, is smaller because we're only limiting the moratorium. And the main motion at least to the Pine Point Overlay, whereas before it was all of Scarborough. But your, but this amendment is just to expand the scope of, you know, the use, which is just the, um. The licensing for, which would include, uh, marijuana manufacturing in addition to what's already listed as cultivation. Which I, I do support that. So with, with, with that, um, all those in favor of the amendment? All right, it's unanimous. Now back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion?
Thanks for the clarification. Duly noted.
I just wanted to clarify for the public because this is a change from what we had before. Before it, it, it was all of Scarborough. Um, and now we're limiting it only to the Pine Point Overlay. And what was before us initially was just cultivation and now we're adding in the manufacturing component. So any other discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, next up is order number twenty-three dash zero four five. Act on the request to reconsider order number twenty-three. Dash zero three five, seven o'clock PM, public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter three eleven. Town of Scarborough Schedule of Licenses, Permits and Application Fees. Tom, do you want to set this one up?
Yes, I'm certain that you're getting tired of seeing this matter before you, um, and I, we all thought we were done at your last meeting. Uh, but no, there's more. Um. We did notice that, uh, staff, uh, there was an oversight. Public Works had done what we asked, provided some feedback and proposed changes. To three different public works related, um, fees. And we overlooked those in the initial draft and, uh, we thought it would be great if we could grab the, uh, an opportunity and get back in front of you. This is back before you under reconsideration, which is a process that you, uh, allow for yourself if you will. Uh, Counselor Katerina agreed to bring this forward. Uh, she could as, uh, since she voted in the affirmative at the last meeting. Uh, the way this works is that you go back to kind of where you started at your last meeting. So, um. What's before you this evening is we proposed two amendments. The first one is what you actually approved last, uh, two weeks ago, uh, in second reading. That was a change to the fire department. And then the second one would, uh, capture these additional public works fees that were overlooked from the, from the beginning. So. You're so inclined, at the very least, you should consider amendment one to get you back where you were. And I would beg your indulgence to consider amendment two as well.
So with that, can I have a motion?
I guess we just motioned to put it on the table. So let's do that first.
Motion to put it on the table, the reconsideration.
And actually, I think you, you had the prerogative, um, you don't need to, it's on the agenda. I stand corrected.
So you have to motion to put it on first.
Right, you're gonna have to have the vote to request to put it on the table. And then your next action would be the.
To amend it.
Point, a quick question and to put it back on the table or request it, is that a, is that a super majority vote? Or it is?
So, so moved. Put it out there.
Second.
Now we need to amend it.
So, any discussion? Do we discuss? Can we discuss the reconsider or do we, any discussion?
No.
No, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right.
So now I make a motion.
You put the motion on the.
Okay, to make the following changes. Am I doing this?
No, make one on, on the floor.
Okay, can I put the main motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? Counselor Hamlin?
Yep.
Now I do the amendment.
Uh, yeah, just a comment. I'm trying to decide between whether this is like the child's movie Never Ending Story. Or if it's like a Paul Masone, you know, commercial, you know, with Orson Welles. I'll stay with the Never Ending Story because no one remembers Orson Welles.
All right, any other discussion or amendments that you'd like to?
Now I do the amendments. I'm looking at the parliamentarian. So, uh, under proposed amendment one, move approval to amend the main motion as noted below. Construction permit fees for all commercial buildings shall be, let me, let me get this right, unlike the last time. Forty cents per square foot. And then, uh, and we vote on that before we do amendment two. All right, so do, let's do that one first.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, she put the motion, she put the amendment out.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Now back to the main motion as amended.
Well, get a.
Can I get another?
I got a second amendment, yes. Uh, which is move approval to amend the main motion as amended. Under chapter seven oh two, street opening fees as noted. I think I'm always supposed to say that once below and adjust the fees accordingly. Um, under four, uh, add non-refundable, oh, excuse me, let me back up. Number one, change to a hundred and twen- oh, a hundred and twenty dollars each. Number two, two hundred dollars each. Number three, twenty-five hundred dollars each. And then number four, non-refundable. Uh, to be added. And that's it.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. So now back to the main motion as double amended. Any discussion?
Uh, so I, I just want to kind of, I know that Counselor Katerina and the town manager brought forward an idea that I had. That when this was first before us about trying to automatically, um, increase some of these fees every year. Um, because we don't always look at them. And I did look at what was brought forward and gave it some thought. It's not as simple as I had originally anticipated, uh, because some of these are already self-inflated. Um, so it's something I'll continue to think about, maybe bring to the finance committee at a future date. Uh, but our last finance committee review, we did talk about the beach parking fees and the concept of. Being a little more market driven on the weekend in the summer. And I scared Todd with it. I think today I scared. Tom and, and, and Tody and Liam. Uh, but I'm still gonna throw it out there. So, because I, you know. I, I think if you're a resident, you understand that you're not going to get a parking space on the weekend. We might as well be, be making fair return on, on the people that are, are using those spaces. It's currently fifteen dollars a day, every day of the week to park for somebody that shows up at the lot. I'd like to motion to amend the schedule of fees to add a new category for weekends in the months of July and August. And for the day pass rate, um, to be thirty dollars, the daily parking rate to be thirty dollars at Ferry Beach. Higgins Beach and Hurt Park. So I'll offer that as a amendment to the main motion.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
What, so thirty day, thirty dollars on the Saturday and Sunday?
In July and August.
July and August at all of the town beaches.
It's currently fifty.
Resident or non-resident?
Uh, yes, daily parking. So you show up without a pass. You, you pay the attendant.
One of my concerns is that town hall is not open on Friday. And I am a procrastinator. And if I'm like, oh, I want to go to the beach. I, it, I, it's where I, I.
If you have a pass.
It's your resident pass.
I don't get them. I don't, I normally park on the street. So I think I just. Just a comment, basically. As I, one hurdle I already see to that is, you know, but I am in support. Of raising the fees. I will tell you now that I've been on the community services and rec advisory board before I was on the council. I've consistently asked Todd to raise the fees. I've asked them to compare them to the other towns. He does not want to. Um, and so I think this is a drastic move, but I think this is, will be helpful with residents. Um, so I'm in support of it.
Yeah, just, just be clear. They actually did a full survey last year, provided a recommended set of comprehensive fee increases. And this council chose not to. So, uh, we have brought them forward. They've just not been supported.
And, and this would be a daily parking rate. Uh, so it says pass, but it's not something you, you purchase ahead of time. So it's, it's the rate you'd pay at the lot on the day. So you wouldn't need to do any transaction at town hall. It'd just be you pull into the lot and the rate is thirty as opposed to fifty.
Right, I was saying, if I'm like, oh, they just raised the rate, I'm gonna now, now I will go by a pass and I can't. It's, I think, just the only comment.
My, my only comment to that is that they will give you a receipt and then you can bring your receipt. Oh, Tody's shaking her head. No, I did that. Can't do that anymore. Sorry, residents.
All right, any other?
Got to be on the ball.
Just one comment.
Counselor Hamlin?
Having gotten regularly thumped over fees, you know, I, sometimes you just gotta, you know. Stand up and take the heat. And if we're doing this one for Todd, then he owes us. Okay, so I'd say no problem. Let's go ahead. You know, we're gonna hear from surf riders, we're gonna hear from, uh, you know, folks, but we've been way behind the market for a long time, so.
Counselor McGee?
I guess the question I have is why just limit it to weekends?
I, I think there's clear demand on the weekend for it. And typically it's tourists, people traveling from away, uh. I, I'm not trying to increase the fees for, for residents or access to the beach in any way. Uh, the lot's gonna be full on the weekend anyways.
I guess my only thought is most residents hopefully are buying the forty dollar resident pass rather than the thirty dollar daily fee to park there. So, I, I guess, in my mind, July and August, every day looks like a weekend out at the beaches, as long as the weather's cooperating. So why limit ourselves to just a weekend thirty dollar fee? Just, just a thought.
So take these small bites.
Raise your hand if you, if you'd like to discuss. Counselor Seither? So try to be a better parliamentarian.
My, my only concern about this, I support the increase in fees. And to Tom's point, this did come before us. And I supported the increase in fees then, and it didn't pass council, which is fine. Um, I, there. As a process person, I'm surprised by the willingness of the council to make this decision at nine fifteen. Um, at night with a very thoughtful amendment and very good discussion, but still. That this was not published ahead of time. We won't have taken public comment. Um, and so that would be my, my reservation. But I like the enthusiasm behind increasing fees.
There is always the option to reconsider.
Again.
Just saying.
Yeah. I, I, I think I would just, I, I think I'm supportive of actually raising the fee. Um, I think if we're gonna do that, I think it would be good to give the rec advisory board and Todd one more opportunity to look at it holistically. So I am supportive of this particular amendment tonight because I think it's a small step in the right direction. And hopefully will allow them to kind of come back and look more holistically again. But this, this is just on weekends, right? In July and August. And so, um, I'm at least supportive of that small amendment tonight. But again, I do think we do need to kind of revisit the recommendation last time and see if there's other changes we need to make. But do that in a more public fashion. All right, so all those in favor on the amendment? All those opposed? All right, it passes six to one. So now to back to the. Main motion as triple amended. Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. What, what, what other fun parliamentary things can you do today?
We could just have this. We could just have this be, instead of this be an automatic, you know, annual increase, we just have this keep going and make amendments every.
Yeah, there you go. All right, next is order number twenty-three dash zero four six. Act on their request to move approval on names posted to the various committees boards by the Appointments Negotiations Committee. At the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting. This is brought forward by the Appointments and Negotiations Committee. So Counselor Shoup, would you like to remind us of the names?
I've got a bunch of appointments that we're gonna do tonight. So first we have the ADA Advisory Board and we are looking to appoint Barbara Greenstein. As a full voting member with a term to expire in twenty twenty-five. Then we have the Historical Implementation Preservation Committee, and we're looking to appoint Edith Waxman as a full voting member with a term to expire in twenty twenty-five. With the Planning Board and we are looking to move James Hebert from the second alternate to a full voting member with a term to expire in twenty twenty-three. And then appoint Bennett Flanders as the second alternate to fill a term to expire in twenty twenty-three. We have the Senior Advisory Board and we're looking to appoint Eleanor Lehman as a full voting member with a term to expire in twenty twenty-four. And appoint Edith Waxman as the first alternate with a term to expire in twenty twenty-four. And lastly, we have the Sustainability Committee and we're looking to appoint Lydia Jop as the second alternate with a term to expire in twenty twenty-five.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, last item. For action is order number twenty-three dash zero four seven. Act on their request to sign the warrants for the regular school budget validation referendum election and, and this, uh, special Portland Water District. District trustee election scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three at the Scarborough High School Alumni Gym. Appoint the warden and warden clerk, set the hours for voter registration and act on appointments of election clerks pursuant to chapter two hundred, article eight. Nominations and elections titled twenty-one A five oh three and authorize the town clerk to make any additional appointments as necessary. This is being brought forward by the town clerk. Tody, would you like to throw this one up?
Um, this is done, uh, prior to any election. It's notifying the public of the, um, the warrants posted in various areas of the town. Announcing that when the election's gonna be taking place and who is on the ballot, which Portland Water, I believe, we're gonna have one write in. And then, uh, the, uh, budget bill, it's, it's also listed on the warrant. Election workers that we have are stated in the back. Everything is in order and we request that.
Great. All right, any questions for Tody? No, any, uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. So I'm gonna pass the pieces of paper for us to sign. So if everybody could sign this before they leave tonight, that would be appreciated. Next up is item number nine, nine, action items. There are no non-action items tonight. Um, item number ten, I'm gonna combine item ten and eleven, standing committee reports and council member comments. Anybody would like to offer a committee update or general comments from the counselors? I'm seeing no comments. Go ahead, Counselor Seither.
Right, um, oh, well, so, I'll be quick. Uh, so Communications Committee meets next Thursday. Um, we've got our standard, um, agenda items. We're also gonna be discussing the townwide survey, um, among other things. We also need to plan our town council action day. Um, so have that on your radar because we're gonna be trying to come up with what we want our town council action to be.
Um, so have that on your radar, because we're gonna be trying to come up with what we want our town council action to be. And try and drill down on a date before everybody goes on summer vacation. Uh, lastly, we're also gonna be discussing our next Counselor Corner Live event. Um, and there has been some discussing, discussion and energy around that being, um, the topic being the school or something to do with the school project. Um, and so I'll have a, you know, more comprehensive update after that meeting. I do want to apologize that there was no Counselor Corner article in this week's E News, um, that so falls solely on my shoulders. I told Allison that I would have something to her, um, and then we did not have power or internet all day Monday. And I just didn't hit the deadline and so I apologize for that, that, hey, there's no excuse. And if nothing else, this is a lesson to my children to not procrastinate and wait until the last minute. Because if I had just emailed it to her before, it would have been taken care of and I just didn't do that. Um, and so that is my update.
Alright. Any other updates? Counselor, Counselor Hamlin?
Yeah, very quickly, uh, the, uh, Shellfish Commission and also the, uh, Coastal Waters Committee will meet, uh, next Tuesday. Uh, for their monthly meetings and, um. I'm really looking forward to this, uh, all committee meeting function, I mean, how exciting is that? It's gonna be really interesting. I mean, I don't have any ideas.
Fear of overselling in there.
So I, I don't have any suggestions for activities, it's a little late for, uh, bobbing for apples or whatever, so, but I, I, I think it's a great idea.
Town manager dunk tank?
Been there, done that.
Alright, any other counselor comments? Or committee updates? No? Alright, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.